We're rolling.
All set? We'll start the meeting at seven oh four. We'll begin with a roll call, members.
Roger Moore.
Bob McGinn.
James Lowry.
Bobby Coon.
Marty Gabe.
Tad Redway Planner.
Okay. We have on the agenda tonight, we have two minutes, public hearing for Moteland. Then a pending application following up with Moteland. And then after that, we'll work on land use ordinance revision. So we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda as read.
Second.
Bob, second.
Yeah.
Any discussion, all in favor? Approved. Approval of minutes. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read them all. We want a table after now. We can jump right into the public hearing. Okay, all right. So we'll open up the public hearing for Moteland. Revision of preliminary site plan permit. Proposal to subdivide the former county connection complex into two lots. Remove the parking area and lighting fixtures from the display parking lot. Located on an eight point nine four acre parcel. At two five six four Portland Road, tax map two, lot one in the B I district. Neil Griffith of Carrabine is the applicant and owner. So we're gonna open it up to the public. I'd like everybody, if you could just be orderly and speak one at a time. Seeing we have no one from the public but, yeah, so that's true. Probably disclose the public hearing.
They want to say.
Well, would you?
Do you want to say it now or?
You want to say it now or during, through your application? Usually it gives you a chance to explain to the, to any of the residents that are here what's going on.
Okay. We're good.
Okay. Okay.
Close it.
We'll close that. I think it's the, the only time I can remember where nobody came. Usually someone from the audience. Okay, so we'll jump right into the applicant. The application, I don't know if we read all that. Same, same information that I just read three minutes ago. So you were in, two weeks ago? Was it two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And we had a few things that we were trying to keep the clock on.
Right. There was only one slight change if possible. Someone on the board brought it up. Since we've got the buffer, why don't we put the fence right on the fence line, on the property line versus eight feet from the fence? Eight feet from the property line. So I went back to the lighting. A design person that did the lighting plan to ask what would happen. He said it would actually be better if it was moved toward Kennybunk, toward this other part. So, and this is his letter handed to you guys. So we'd like to be able to move that fence onto the property line since we've got that eight foot buffer.
It's from the same person that did.
Someone that did the planning.
What does that mean to the right of way that you gave easement allowing for the repair?
Um, so the right of way allows the easement. The easement allows the, a rundle or Moteland to maintain that fence. So there's still enough room to maintain it. So it doesn't really affect that parking area at all.
That would be able to maintain on both sides?
Mm-hmm, yes.
How, how big was that?
How big is the fence?
No, the easement, eighteen feet?
Uh, eight feet from the property line was the buffer. And so we had another four feet, I think, five feet to the other side. If anyone needs a drawing.
Did he create a new drawing for the change?
He didn't. He just said, you know, if you move it over onto the property line, it'll actually help the lighting situation even better. But he said, nothing will change as far as what he recommended as far as, you know, deleting existing fixtures or anything.
The only question, so the fence will end up where?
Right on the property line.
Okay, it's still gonna be going across the cabin because you can't grant anything there.
Right, so this is where the proposed fence was gonna be underneath the buffer from the property line. We're saying if it could be on the property line, it's still a dis-easement.
Do you know what you're using?
Um, right now.
No, I'm saying that on the other side of the fence.
Yes.
If you're on the property line.
Right, but there's still that, that parking lot that they're getting as a right to use. And he's going to sort of use that whole parking lot.
Do we have, do we have the wording of the easement that was granted? Because we're asking that they follow according to this. Just wanna make sure you're not getting easemented. Do you have a copy of the easement that they're managing?
Do I have a copy of the easement? I don't have a copy of the easement. Part of the.
Okay, did you see this before tonight? So it might concern it is whether we need to have a graphic plan or not to understand. Or would this be, this be sufficient?
Well, first of all, no, we need, we need a plan to be, to be signed. Because we don't have a plan to be signed. We need a mile art showing all of this on one thing. On the, on the needed survey, we need to show all of this stuff on one point that we can sign. We need a mile art, a full-size mile art.
So we'll need to make that a condition, if anything, make that a condition.
And I would point out that Jim Stockman makes a citation for the long district on eight twenty-one seven. Uh, this is the eight twenty-five district, not eight twenty-one seven district. In P I district, not P I district. That's, I'm just trying to see if there's.
Where's that reference?
It's referenced down below where he says eight twenty-one seven lighting.
Oh, oh, oh.
That is, that is, that's not appropriate because actually there is no provision for.
Right.
For that.
So would the seven point five be sufficient?
Seven point five is the same as seven, eight two five five two C. So I would say that the second one is the material. The first one that's in seven five is, is applicable and is in performance with, with this. And under the, the old, under the plan that he gave us dated October twentieth, that was, we showed z, basically half, less than half a foot cable across the property. So. I would, you know, it's up to the board. I'm never, I'm never comfortable with a fence on the property. Isn't it, it's number one because.
That's, that's why I always ask the question of, yeah, if it's on the property line, technically, you can't call on the other side of the fence to do anything with it.
Would they have an easement?
Yeah, it was actually your idea, Marty.
Yeah, but we, but we. If you're on the property line, easement, but we don't have anything in the way easement's written.
Easement will be right of use for, for Moteland.
Oh, yeah, I was just, well, I was trying to re, I was trying to rectify some of the conditions. We don't have, we don't, we don't even have the plan if we're gonna move that. This first site, the long property line under two hundred.
So in the findings of fact, there's a description of where the fence will be located, right?
What? One question, just before we start changing everything, uh, public hearing. Public hearing, what they try to, as submitted. It's not trying to change some stuff. Now, we listen to the public and then make the changes, but leave our.
I mean, I guess if there's, if there's reservation, whether it's procedurally or, or whatever the case may be, or, you know, because of the easement. What I would suggest is we move forward with the plan as originally submitted. And, you know, potentially, if Ted's comfortable, allow for a de minimis review after the fact to establish it on the property line. That's a fact that they care to do.
Where else you can make a condition and the other way to do it also is to make a condition that is applied easement to us. To return that indicates that there's rights, prescribed rights to the property. Four minutes.
Yep.
Sounds like that's, that's what you're going to.
It's up to, it's up to. Which one you feel?
Well, the only plan that we have and do is that they have to install a fence in accordance with the approved plan.
We never will have either.
Yes.
Other than the sketch. So I, so I think.
Lighting plan.
But even, even that doesn't.
Yeah, the lighting plan shows.
Yeah, the lighting plan shows the fence, but they just say give right of venture.
Wow.
That could be two feet or ten feet, twelve feet, you don't.
Stockman's, and also it's based on the solid fence. Grab something here today?
Yeah, if you have any ideas. If we give a conditional approval, we really won't be able to sign off until the condition is met. Which puts you up against your deadline.
So even if it's in the D at closing, would that condition?
We can put that as a condition, but until we see the, in the D, and we, we can't sign it.
I see. And that has to be done at, at another hearing?
Have to. We, we only get together as, as a board. Well, I mean, that, that really pertains to what you need from us from an approval standpoint.
Right.
You know, and you're the expert in that. If you can take documentation of this meeting and say, hey, we got approved, and it flies through whatever you need it to do, then, you know, that's, that's really up to you. Yeah, if, if whoever, whatever the funding engine or whatever, if, if we'll give our, perhaps we'll give our provisional approval. Like James said, if that, if that's enough for them, then they're all set. But if they need a signature, we don't, if there's a condition, we have to make sure it's met before we can sign.
You're gonna have to submit the plan with, showing exactly where the fence is and where the easement is along.
So I mean, is the, is the change in fence location something that would be beneficial to you guys? It, it was.
Yeah, at, at the last meeting, Marty brought it up, and we appreciated, you know, that kind of common sense, you know, sort of approach. And so it was after the meeting that we, that I went back to Ed and said, can we do this? Because we're effectively losing fifteen feet.
Whatever it was. Or eight feet because of that, you know, from the property line is the eight foot buffer. So eight feet.
So a lot of parking spots you'll, you'll lose for the display.
And, and so with that, we went back to Jim and said, you know, what would happen? He said, well, it would actually be better as far as, you know, less than point five, point zero five, by moving it that way in that direction. And that's what, that's where that letter came from. So what we're saying is, you know, yes, it shows that it's eight feet from the property line on here. But, but the, the letter from Jim says if you move it onto the property line, you're still within, you know, guidelines of point five.
And he wrote eight feet to the south towards Kennybunk. So that's how far, and would that end up, end up being on the property line?
It's gonna be on the property line.
It's gonna be on the property line. So. So if you look at that, that, that sketch there, the dotted or the solid green line was, is where they're originally.
Right, yeah.
And then to the south is the dashed green, and then that's where we would like to see it. And then the buffer is the red.
There you go, man.
So if the dark green, maybe it's the fence.
Too weird to take. I have a question. When was this all dreamed up, last week?
Um, it took Jim, well, Friday, I think it was. When he was able to actually start looking at it again.
Oh, and this is what my question is. I'm wondering between, when did you get these?
This?
Yeah, to move it. And when nothing was given to Ted, so.
Yeah.
Because right now, we're getting blindsided.
Yeah.
We have one conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I have a, a question. Ted, maybe you would know. We, we, we would like to have, we're talking about having that, like a maintenance strip so you can maintain. Is that just being good neighbors or is that a requirement?
No, it's not a requirement. I don't know what the, I don't know what you need easement for in the first place. You can't use the parking area.
Yeah, so maybe if it's right on the line.
For the first place.
It was, yeah, with eight feet, with eight feet left, if he's got repair, he can tear it all down from his own side.
Right, yeah.
But I, what is the intent of the easement in the first place? I mean, the easement was when you were gonna use the parking space. You wanted to use the parking area.
Sure.
But you've got to maintain that buffer. So this fence is basically gonna cut that off anyway. So what's the point of the easement?
Well, well, because the, the parking lot itself encroaches on the other side of the property line. Right. And we don't want to tear that up.
The asphalt.
Well, once you put the fence in, you've effectively cut off your parking lot to the fence anyway.
That's right.
So, so originally, before we, we got into the lighting and the fence, the easement seemed to be appropriate to give you rights over that adjacent piece of, what would become the adjacent piece of lane.
Right.
In order to do the buffering and maintain that, et cetera. But now that you're putting up a fence on your property, you don't need the easement because you can get to it and tear it down from your side of the property.
Unless they choose to place it right at or on the property line, which then they'd need some, some ability to get to it from the other side. But that's just up to them to deal.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we really need any legal document saying.
Right.
He needs to be allowed to maintain his fence.
It's on their property, their property.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and if they're all right with having that close to their property, there's nothing we can say about that.
Sure there is. Of course you can. I mean, you know, you got, anything you do, it's gotta be reasonable. If you, you can't put a fence on, on a property line and, and, I mean, our general, the general standard is you put a fence on the property line, you can't maintain any of it.
General standard, but, but there's nothing in the code saying that, that we require they need two feet to.
What the code says is they put a twenty-five foot buffer strip in there. That's what the code requires. They rip up all that parking area and they put a twenty-five foot strip in there. That's what the code calls for. So I think we're in a position to.
Oh, I, I agree. I agree, we could, but at this point, we, we don't see, I think we all agree that last week, we all agreed that would be a good idea. So we've already gone beyond the requirement of a buffer and saying the fence will provide a, a screen. So whatever, wherever that fence is, as long as it's not on the, the other property, they can go right on, right up to that line and.
To that plan.
It, it probably is, but, you know, they could have a pink building. It might be bad playing too, but it's, it's up to them. And with fence locations, it's up to you guys.
The, the only, the only thing, is a fence considered a structure? That's gotta be back from the property line. Well, if it did, it would have to meet the setback.
I think.
And is not considered a structure. We do not consider fences structures.
They meet the standard.
It's up to them to define it as a structure. Correct. Just like a swimming pool.
They, they could put a fence up after, so they could always put a fence around the rest of the, the property.
That's right. And you know what the neighborhood said? The neighborhood said, don't you dare come on my side of the property to maintain it. And they can't do it, don't do anything about it?
That's up to them. Well, yeah. So, so Ted, I mean, it sounds like you've got some strong feelings on where the fence should be placed. What's, what's your recommendation?
Well, you know, it, put, put some kind of buffer in there or else they've got a supply and easement within thirty days. That shows that they've got prescriptive rights, maintenance rights in perpetuity to maintain that fence from the, the other lot. That would be the only other way to do it.
So two feet, five feet?
Two feet's good.
Good for the ladder.
You can get a ladder.
Well, plus they have their own property. See, I, not their own property, but they have, they have the, how much asphalt is gonna be left? Eight feet. Eight feet. So why not do it the eight feet in case that stuff has to be repaired?
Well, that's all on the other property.
It's all on the other property.
Cut that and rip it out.
That's true.
And I, well, if we did go with, with that, what would that do with the, moving this forward? Can we give an approval?
Yeah.
With that condition.
With the condition.
You can change the conditions any way you want to.
So we can put that condition, but can we sign it?
No, you can't sign it.
Before that. Do they even have anything?
They don't have anything to sign.
Right.
We can sign an approval that can take to the, to the.
Right.
To the closing, but they gotta get their, they gotta get the amount. We don't list the file.
Well, maybe that'd be good enough. Well, all I'm saying is I don't care what type of agreement they have. It's, it's the two property owners that have to make that arrangement. As long as, as the lighting works out, screening, I think that meets the screen requirement.
But.
Burn the daylight here.
Yeah, but the fact is, you don't have anything in writing. And that's most of the things when you have a closing or anything else. Everything is black and white.
Well, I could change it here and I could burn it out and they can have it tomorrow. And I could sign it for, I could sign it for the board. Let's get to the point where I'm doing that anyway, so I'm sort of testing to it, you know, forth on behalf of the board. Yeah, we can't sign it tonight because we've gotta make change right now.
Just to make some type of movement here, to hear from each of you what you think.
Yeah, that's why we had here today.
I mean, if there's, if there's concerns and reservations about putting it right on the property line, what I would suggest is we give the approval based on the last plans that we've seen. The plans that are in front of us.
Yeah.
And leave it to the applicant to come back and submit, you know, a de minimis change or whatever we want to call, an application to Ted to slide it down a few extra feet. So that you can accommodate your closing. But know that if you really want to move it to the, closer to the property line, you know, you work through with Ted. And if he deems necessary, us again, hopefully not.
And you need the.
Right, to, to deal with easements and things like that. I mean.
Well, I, you know, I can also make the changes on the computer right now, print it out. Do you have a printer here?
Yeah, right there. The printer right there.
No, I can't connect to that.
I said, there is a printer right there.
Yeah.
I didn't say your printer.
There's a printer in there, I can.
Okay, so you're looking at the condition under the.
Well, the. Well, it would be, it would be item number eight, where it says the applicant shall install an eight-foot fence along the side property line between the two line plots. You can leave it at that.
Well, on the last page, you've got the applicant shall install an eight-foot fence on landscaping in accordance with the approved plans too.
Right.
Yeah, and if we, if, if we cut that off at plans in, in number two, under the condition.
In accordance with the plans.
Yeah. We got a hundred and twenty days to, to get that. I mean, you guys tell me how long you want it, it has to be before they.
Of course not.
They put it in, yeah. I mean, there's the issue of putting it in. Twenty days, you put it in, and, and at the bottom, I could, I have, you have the applicant shall supply the town planner with a copy of the easement granting prescriptive maintenance rights.
Yeah, like that.
To the four point nine four acre lot for a fence buffer.
Is that gonna be four?
Number four, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was.
To the fence.
Yeah.
Actually, this'll make more sense. This is how I read it. The fence separating the two lots. Okay, so what, the other way to do it, and I'm not trying to undermine here, Jamie, but I think.
No, I mean, if everybody's comfortable and we, everybody feels comfortable with that, I mean.
Read that, please.
All right, and we read it that the applicant shall supply the town planner with a copy of the easement granting prescriptive maintenance rights to the fence separating the two lots. To, actually, it's to the fence, to the main, actually, it would be to the parent lot. Okay. That was granting prescriptive, I'll put it this, prescriptive rights to the parent lot for, in order to maintain, in order to maintain. Let me just try it again, Marty, here. I'll, the buffer fence separating.
For the purpose of maintaining two lots.
Yeah. So tell me if you feel like this better. The applicant shall supply the town planner with a copy of the easement granting prescriptive rights to the parent lot in order to maintain the buffer fence separating the two lots. Does that work or is that?
Should that also be noted on the plan?
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, so what about number two?
Yeah, we've gotta change that because they're, we're asking them to install the fence before, before conveyance.
Yeah.
Or within one hundred and twenty days, whichever is less.
Before winter, before winters, that's the specification.
So take it and install the fence and then go ten years.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's, it, it says or.
Yeah. Or within twenty.
Go later than a hundred and twenty days. So before, before they take the lot that Moteland is on and sell that or convey that to somebody, or a hundred and twenty days, they've gotta put this fence up.
Says whichever is less.
Yeah.
Oh. Whichever is less, so.
Why, so they could put up the fence.
Why is that needed?
Not, yeah.
Yeah, why is the whichever is less needed?
According to this, they, they, they could put up the fence today and then never convey the property.
No, but it's all within a hundred-and-twenty days, means that was, they have to finish, then convey it within a hundred-and-twenty days. Or install it within a hundred-and-twenty days.
Right.
Whichever is less maybe is needed.
Yeah, so they need this by installing the fence within a hundred-and-twenty days, okay? But just say they do that. But they never convey it, ever the, the rest of the property, which.
So that, so that. That's what, whichever is less then.
Yes, a clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. You guys know what you gotta do?
Whichever is less, right?
And then also defining the fact, number eight, says it'll extend approximately six feet inside the parent lot.
That's got very little, yeah.
Yeah.
Eight-foot high solid wood fence.
Along the pro- the property line is good enough.
Right.
Along the side property line between the two lots.
Period.
Get rid of everything else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, um, Ted, you're saying solid, so, yeah, originally it was gonna be slots of three inches with three-inch gap slots?
No, solid fence. We always said it was.
Well, you said it'd have to be fifty, uh, well, okay, that, that's not what I told Jim. Jim based it on, um, spaces, because you told me and, and Tim that if you had a solid fence, it's gonna blow over because of the wind that it would catch. And all you need is fif- you know, thirty percent buffering or whatever it is, and that gives us fifty percent.
You need sixty-six percent buffering. Look, guys, you wanna change all this now?
No, no, I was just wondering.
We'll go back to.
I just heard you say solid.
Well, that's, that's, basically, you gotta have a stockade fence for all intents and purposes. That's what you need. That's in lieu of putting in all that landscape, tearing it out and putting in the landscape. I thought I made that clear from the very beginning. That was in lieu of that. That's, that preserves all that parking space if we do it that way.
Okay.
It's up to you guys. I mean, unless you guys wanna reconsider the solid fence thing.
I don't remember talking about whether it's solid or.
So, the description.
Well, what kind of.
The description here is an eight-foot stockade wooden fence.
Which is stockade.
Generally, solid.
Solid, yeah. That was the description in, in what?
What I presume was supplied by you guys.
Right.
So, see attached diagram.
Regards, Ed, Curzick.
Hmm?
That you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Just clarifying.
Yeah.
All right, so, any other changes to find the fact?
We'll find out when we read it.
Now, let's be read.
You gonna go print it and get it over here?
All right, so.
Please.
Should, um, you wanna print it out first or should I just start reading it and we'll pay attention to the few things?
Know where you've gotta go with that?
Hmm?
Do you know where?
Number eight, front page.
Yeah.
Two lot. Then, the condition, number two and three.
I'll print it out right now.
Two, three, and four added. And four, I mean, get two and four added. So, just to make use of time, did I just stop reading Ted?
Sure.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so, here's the, um, find the fact, we're gonna read, long reading. Uh, find the fact and motion for approval, property of Neil Griffith, DBA Moteland. Plenary site plan approval revision, whereas on October eighth, twenty fifteen, the Arundel Planning Board received an application from Neil Griffith to revise a plenary site permit. To revise the plenary si- site plan permit dated October twenty-seventh, twenty eleven, to subdivide the former county connection complex into two zoning compliant lots. Erect a buffering fence along the new property line, modify existing lighting fixtures located in the display parking lot located on an eight-point-nine-four acre parcel at two-five-six-four Portman Road, tax map two, lot one, in the BI district. I'll read it. Did, did you, do you have a copy of this?
I don't.
Do we have extra one floating around?
Also, I got extra, but I got.
Yeah, there's extra one more for, for John.
No, we'll break something later. We didn't go looking in here yet, this pile.
Yeah, pretty soon.
Yep.
Sir.
Thank you.
We can keep an eye out on things that we don't catch. Okay, um, second paragraph, whereas on November five, twenty fifteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with section nine-point-eight-point-F, point three-C of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of facts and notice of decision. Finding of facts, number one, the owners of the property and the applicant's are Neil Griffith of Carrow, Maine. Number two, the property is located at two-five-six-four Portman Road, tax map two, lot one, in the BI district. Number three, the property currently contains an automobile sales and service facility approved by the Arundel Planning Board on October twenty-seventh, twenty eleven, and currently occupied by Classic Auto Dealership, DBA Moteland. Four, the current parcel on tax map two, lot one, is a single lot consisting of eight-point-nine-four acres. Five, the applicant proposed to subdivide a four-acre L-shaped parcel off the south and west end of the lot with two-hundred-one feet of frontage along Portman Road, lot one, leaving the remain, remaining, remainder. Of the parcel with three-hundred-ninety-nine plus or minus linear feet of frontage on Portman Road in a lot area of four-point-nine-four acres. Six, the subdivision is technically compliant with the dimensional standards of section eight-point-two-five-point-four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Seven, the resulting subdivision line between the two lots will intrude eight feet into the existing display lot. Now, that, that will need to change, right?
No. Nope. The, the line's not changing.
The line is, that's the line.
Right.
They're just moving the fence back closer.
That's, that's same fence, that's the line.
All right, so it's a display lot that extrudes, okay. Let me start that again. Seven, the resulting subdivision line between the two lots will intrude eight feet into the existing display lot of the parent lot. The applicant is proposing to provide easement granted to the parent lot from the new lot in order to preserve the integrity of the parking area surface.
And fence.
Right.
Okay.
And fence.
And fence.
Can I make, well, we're making comments now, I was holding a couple from this item and the last one.
Sure, yeah.
I think instead of the term subdivision in number six.
Yeah.
We should describe it as a division of land, so that somebody's not, doesn't misinterpret this.
The word subdivision.
That, right, that this is a subdivision.
So, this division of land?
The division of land, yeah.
Well, Ted, we'll have that changed.
It's okay. Well, there'll be a few other changes too.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I don't, and again, in number seven, the resulting subdivision line, I, I would say just property line. Okay.
Well, how about this? The resulting division line.
Property, I thought. Really, that goes all through the whole thing.
Okay. I think we have a definition. All right. Question?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, so, number eight, as an alternative to the twenty-five-foot landscape strip along the side property line mandated by section eight-point-two-five-point-five-four-C of the land, of Arundel Land Use Ordinance, the applicant is proposing to install an eight-foot high solid wood fence along the side property line between the two lots.
You're making changes, aren't you?
I'm gonna add a lot. Yeah, there, uh, just with a couple minor ones. All right. Well, it's, 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 you'll, you'll, you'll be happy there in there. Number nine, in order to remain in compliance with the lighting requirements of section eight-point-two-five-point-five-point-two-C of the L U O, the applicant's lighting designer, who's J and M Lighting Design Incorporated, has specified the light, the following modifications to the existing light poles and luminaries located in the display and parking area located along the southern boundary of the parent lot. So, A, the change would be to remove or disconnect the lighting fixture located on the southwest corner of the lot. B, on the pole located directly east of the southwest corner pole, delete one of the fixtures and rotate the second fixture ninety degrees towards the main building. C, on the pole located at the southeast corner of the parking lot, delete one of the two fixtures. That, um, it's what we were all talking, we just wanted to be sure.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Now, um, these are gonna have to be, um, not, but it's approved at each one separately?
This is, this is site plan.
Okay. So, uh, conformance with site plan approved criteria are, are, after due review and consideration of Arundel Planning Board, uh, wait a minute, after due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section nine-point-eight-point-F four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. A, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the BI district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in section seven, eight, eight-point-two-five, and nine-point-eight of this ordinance. B, the proposed project requires no state or federal permits. C, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety or fire protection and will not create a financial burden to the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. D, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on the quality of surface or groundwater resources. E, the project will produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. F, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite or offsite impact upon existing vehicular or pedestrian circulation systems within the community of Anayoid. G, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, or important cultural resources. The proposed project could have a deleterious impact upon the visual quality of the adjacent new lot, but this impact will be mitigated by the proposed eight-foot solid wood fence that will be constructed along the southern property line of the parent map two, lot one parcel for the entire width of the pre-existing parking display lot. H, the proposed project will not produce undue noise, odor, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. The applicant will implement all light fixture modifications specified in the remedial lighting plan prepared by J and M Lighting Design Incorporated and dated October twenty, twenty fifteen. But on that, we do have, um, um, a modification as we.
No, he said, no, that still remains the same. There's no one said that those old ones won't do it.
But the numbers are based on the fence being eighty feet, so, is that?
What did Ted, go print out, so.
What are you, what are you grappling with?
This is number eight, it says the applicant, uh, in, in.
H?
H, I'm sorry, H, on the second page, last sentence.
The lighting modifications are the same if it's where the fence was or where it's going to be, even with the new thing that he submitted.
It's describing the, the modifications, taking the pole, taking the lights down.
Not exactly, but, um, I see it makes.
It will still be in compliance, it'll, um, we agree that, that if anything, it'll be better.
But the light will.
Yeah, but, right, but the sentence reads.
It's in compliance.
The sentence reads, the, the applicant will implement all lighting fixture modifications as described. Not, doesn't have anything to do with the fence in that paragraph.
Right. Okay. So, that, so that doesn't really refer to this plan, that's what. Okay, thank you. I, the proposed project will have, I just needed a, a break to have some water.
They understand, we've done that.
That I, the proposed project will have a neutral fiscal impact on municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions of the Arundel Planning Board, uh, the, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the plenary site plan application of Neil Griffith to revise the plenary site plan permit dated October twenty-seventh, twenty eleven, by subdividing a four-acre lot from the existing eight-point-nine-four acre parcel at twenty-five-sixty-four Portman Road, tax map two, lot one, in the BI district, subject to the following conditions. The first condition is the subdivision of the. A division of property, but we did a.
It's a subdivision. Anytime you cut a piece of land in two, it's a subdivision. We don't, it's not a subdivision by our standard. What constitutes a subdivision?
So, I think we should avoid that language. I think we should avoid that term if it doesn't meet the definition of a subdivision.
But everything's a subdivision. Anytime you cut a piece of land, it's a subdivision, by definition.
But, but by definition, a subdivision is defined in our ordinance. So I think we should avoid the use of the term so that somebody doesn't become, would not be confused that we've granted a subdivision approval.
Well, when you have a family subdivision, you have, you have not granted a subdivision approval either.
Correct.
But it's still called a subdivision.
I disagree that it should be called a subdivision.
Yeah, however, the state disagrees with you.
Maybe so, but, I mean.
But our ordinance. But we have a specific definition for subdivision.
We have two. One is a division of land, one is a subdivision of three more lots constitutes a subdivision, if you'll agree with that. Well, we'll go with, look, if you guys wanna go with division of land, we'll go with division of land. I'm sorry. That, that's good.
All right, if you wanna make everybody happy both ways, subdivision and division of land. Put a both there. There, that covers both ends.
It's a good, it's a, it's a good, um, compromise, Marty, but I, I will just go with the division of property.
Okay, so, I'll repeat, number one, the division of the property shall be performed in accordance with the survey plan prepared by, you know, land survey and dated nine-fifteen, twenty fifteen. Number two, the applicant shall install the eight-foot high solid landscape fence in accordance with the approved plans prior to the conveyance of the four-point-zero acre lot to another party or within one-hundred-and-twenty days. There we go.
Question. As we said here before.
Yeah.
Okay, a hundred-and-twenty days.
Yeah.
Okay, usually when we're playing with this, we're playing in summer months. You have a winter coming, okay? And a hundred-and-twenty days is not gonna be workable conditions, generally speaking.
What was it proposed here?
Remember how we were saying?
Well, the applicant can do it tomorrow.
That's right.
He can do it tomorrow, he's just gotta do it within a hundred-and-twenty.
Okay, okay. I mean, it's really up, it's up to them to.
They won't struggle in January.
Right.
Only reason I'm saying that is we've had it in the past somewhere else, and it was, oh, we can't do it for landscaping purposes, because of ground trouble.
Right.
That's where I'm coming at.
This is a pen.
Needs to be done. It's up to them to do.
But, if, I agree with you, Marty, however, if Neil has a buyer for the other property and he wants to close in two weeks, the fence has gotta go.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter if we get extra cost down to six feet.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
So, if you wanna make it a hundred-and-twenty days, I don't care.
And I think the difference, with a fence is you can, you know, use mechanical means rather than landscaping to, to get it in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's how they're doing it.
Right.
Especially through the asphalt. Okay, nu- number three, the third condition is, the applicant shall perform all lighting fixture modifications prescribed on the remedial light plan prepared by J and M Lighting Design Incorporated and dated ten, twenty, twenty fifteen. Incorporated and dated ten twenty twenty fifteen prior to the conveyance of the four-point-zero acre lot to another party or within a hundred and twenty days. Should we say whichever is less?
Then either way.
Whichever is less. Okay, number four, Ted, uh-
The applicant shall supply the town planner with a copy of the easement granting restricted maintenance rights to the parent lot in order to maintain the buffer fence separating the two lots. Is that, a timeline on that too?
No.
Then-
Yeah.
Yeah. How about we just have the same phrase prior to the conveyance of the four-acre lot to another party or within a hundred and twenty days? Okay.
We can get that one tomorrow.
Yeah. All right, so-
I was happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll print it now.
There's some more, the point makes the last printing, what about some of the other changes we may need?
I'll give them to-
You got them all, okay.
I still drink.
Division of property?
Yep. I got the divisions of property.
So I might as well continue with the last statement. So approved by the Arundo Planning Board this fifth day of November twenty fifteen.
Motion to approve.
Hey, you have a second on that?
Second.
Any, yeah, all right, um, any discussion?
Well, it should be as amended too.
Yes.
We've been asked that all the time.
Okay, that's read, all right. Hopefully, we'll just double check, make sure he has that. Okay. Any other discussion?
Say.
Well, we'll wait till, we'll wait till we actually-
Well, no, he hasn't voted, so.
He don't vote.
Yep, so, here are no other discussion, all in favor, none opposed, unanimous, so it was, um-
unanimous by who's present?
By the only four of us. Yeah, that, Bob, that was your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so-
Here you go, guys. Thank you.
We, we'll sign this, but we'll have to, after, um-
They'll have to come back, but he's going back.
Yeah, yeah, we'll sign, we'll come back, but you'll have to get my lot plans, um, to Ted, I don't know how many copies he'll ask for, but my, maybe I'll spark these. So, um, he'll tell you.
Which signing block is the condition?
Of the plan itself, what's the, you know, this here, right?
Of that?
Not that, that's handled request.
Yeah. What is it in that?
Not that side.
I didn't know that, I said, I didn't know that in Europe.
Well, wait until he comes back, until they're waiting until he comes back.
Cause he knows what, what they will want too.
We, my lot is-
You have the mother of that.
Right.
That's too small.
No, he's got, yeah, there's a full set of that.
Full set, okay.
He's got a full set.
And this would be added as, as in the, then you, you have full, full-
We would do the my lot, the whole net access.
It would be of the, where the property comes down.
Where, I heard someone mention that something should be added to the notes, the architect, the emergency-
We were talking about the easement.
The easement.
Well, it's a condition here, should, should be in there that-
Probably, uh, they've already done the my lot.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's what he said, you already did.
Well, he's got a, of-
He's got a full-size copy of this print, a Dell printed in my lot.
I'm sorry, I thought Tom just-
So, well, number fourteen, probably, I guess, covered a further evaluation of required easements right away as recommended prior to conveyance to a third party, which is not specified, but, yeah. All right, so, yeah, so like Marty was saying, you'd need a, a, a signature block on there. Ted can show you sample of that.
Ted also saved size. Those, this is-
C size?
No, this is, it's not as big as you think.
B sized.
Oh, the my lot?
Forty-four by thirty-six.
Yeah.
Twenty-four by thirty-six.
You know, full size.
Yeah.
Chief. I think that's it. This thing is all approved, you guys once, once you get this, you guys are ready to move forward, you can bring this, that document.
All right.
When you think you're gonna be working on the fence?
Tonight, tomorrow.
Soon as possible.
When is signing?
Right now, it's twelfth, so.
It's a week from today. Yeah, so if, if there was any delay, we, we'd bail week until it's made.
This is fine. Is there gonna be another planning board meeting, additional rooms this month?
There's one.
We are meeting next week.
We'll do one next week, yeah.
And then is there one after that?
I don't think so.
There's just one, no, the second one would have fallen on Thanksgiving Day.
Yeah.
Right, so I, I don't know, no change, none, no additional meetings?
Probably not unless something, you know, really pressing was coming along, we felt, you know, we needed to do one off, off the normal schedule.
Otherwise, we'd be meeting three weeks in a row.
Right. We still are, more or less.
Well, we, I heard Ted say we'll have an extra one in December.
No, I'm just saying, the, all the other activities.
When is that? When is that scheduled? The December meeting?
Wait till he comes back, until we-
Yeah. You guys looking, you back in front?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Tim's, Tim's, he has it on next schedule for next week.
Yep, I guess we wanted to confirm, we submitted everything, we had anything.
Wait, wait, until he, wait, wait, come back.
The twelfth is there.
That's the best thing I can say, right, the second, because we got people until they come to their-
I didn't bring that one.
Let's work.
The twelfth. The agenda for the twelfth, the Senate is, we were all there for today's and next week's. There is, there's an email with all the special meetings coming up.
Oh, is that one of the Word documents?
Yeah.
Let's see that. Oh, yeah, I probably got it on my phone, I can see it. Oh, I don't know if I can, can you open up the documents on your phone?
I don't think-
Yeah, I can open up a Word document.
No, I can't.
You don't have a smartphone.
That's right. I'm smart, not, not to have a smartphone.
I think, I think they are, uh, just the minutes of last time and the agenda in both formats for tonight.
You know, I found you went for the pig, there were two separate, there were two separate ones.
Well, here it is. Come down. Send out the agenda for the twelfth, the scouts, the area.
Oh, great, yeah.
I didn't know if you had it, he was wondering the day it was asked.
No, I haven't sent out the-
And it's for the-
Always comes.
Which has improved again.
Tell me about five bucks a chance.
All right, everybody got it? Guys throw yours away, no, I've got yours.
Have, how many my lot plans do you need?
Just need one my lot, two paper ones. Right. You'll want one, and I'll want one from Bob that's, he'll sign.
And then, um, that's of the original survey.
That's a survey with the proposed changes on it.
With the proposed, so you want, you, basically you want this as a my lot.
Yeah, but I want it on a, on a survey.
Yeah.
I want it on the survey plan.
Yeah, okay.
With, with a, with a, the approval block in front, it says approved by the-
We're not a plan, plan board, for the Arundo Plan Board.
With seven signature, well, six signature blocks, six signature lines for these guys to, to sign. That goes in your file, and that's also what you want to, I mean, you can file in Alfred if you want to, you don't have to. It's just, we have it on record to show that that's what you did, you got your approval, and that's what you got the approval for, so, two years from now, three years from now, an appraiser comes in and says, hey, this doesn't meet the standard, how come?
Yeah.
You know, this fence is on the property line, and where's, where's this stuff that, it doesn't meet this part of the sentence, now they see. Oh, we got an approval for this on November fifth.
So, do you have a, an example of the approval block that needs to be on here, or will a surveyor?
You should know, if not, I'll, I'll, just have him give me a call, okay?
Okay.
What?
There were two minor little, little things, first sentence, that was-
First sentence.
Two revised, it's, it revised.
The last two words, flip.
Jim, why don't you write it down?
And, the two revised?
The one on this. And then under five-
I may not have written everything else down.
Then under five, leaving the re, and the remainder.
There was so minor, it doesn't change the intent.
Yeah, no, no, none of it changed the intent, I would have, in case he, on the dehabitation to Neil Griffith, were two revised, right?
Revised, yeah.
And then-
Yeah.
And then, and then five-
I'm the secretary, sorry.
And then five, the second sentence, did you get it?
What, the remainder?
Remender.
Remained.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we all in agreement that everything else is all right?
Yeah, that looks good.
Eight and one, just gonna print it off.
You gotta print it out again?
Yeah.
You gotta go reprint again?
If you're going to the bank, you want to have it.
You, you don't have to edit them though.
I'm not going to, we gotta do two, two for your sign, one for the applicant, one for us.
Great.
At this point, it'd be easier to load that print, I'll figure out if you-
But they won't give you a password.
Oh, they won't?
Is that Wi-Fi gate? Why, they're afraid you're gonna use their paper?
All you gotta do is then-
Send it to your phone.
That's how bad it's getting.
But I found out with mine, if I'm near one, I've got, if I need to print, if you're near one, you can hit print and then find the nearest printer.
Print someplace.
I was in some office and I, I, I was just playing around with them, I wasn't putting anything, but I checked, about twelve different ones came up, it says select one.
Cool, so, everybody, we can hack Bob's phone.
That would be neat.
All right, so that's it, any other changes?
Nope.
Now, here's a question, Bob, 'cause I don't know. If you have the printers supposedly up, but is Wi-Fi accessible?
Turn the printer on.
I have one.
I, I, I don't know.
It may depend on the camera.
The only rea, the only reason to ask it is because, about two printers at the same time.
One more than you've-
Both rows, right? Two different ones, one has Wi-Fi, one doesn't.
Yeah, I don't think it turns it on, because it searches-
Yeah, for available.
It searches for-
Yeah.
For the available signal.
If it wasn't going.
Hey, not, it's not reading out of, not the wrong code.
Technically, you're called, and that kind of stuff.
I'll, I'll find, I'll tell you that next meeting, ask me, I'll print mine off and see if I can print it with.
Now, listen, I knew at this, the first time I ever was able to do this on my phone, I got a happy birthday from Dunkin' Donuts for a free coffee, and it was, what am I supposed to do with this? You know, I, today, so, thought about it for a while and-
It's a short talk.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 no.
It, it, right on the coupon, it says, you must print this off and present to the cashier. The cashier must keep this as their record, I mean, it was, so I thought, yeah, this is-
The color or black and white?
It was color. Um, I don't know if it's gotta be color, but-
That's where they suck you hard.
So, I said, so, I pushed print underneath the thing, then I heard my copier in the other room, my printer in the other room, so I went in there.
So if you could, like, print out like, like twenty copies of that, and we can all go in and with that coupon, we could get free.
All done, I already had it. I mentioned you gotta control, what's the number and the scan on it, once, once you, they, they got that part of it, that's it.
But I was surprised they made you print it.
Yeah, there'll be a whole bunch of people that get this thing that can't use it.
They can scan tickets, airline tickets.
Yeah.
boarding passes.
Yeah.
Tony would print anything out?
So, it's crazy.
Yeah. And it did have one of those scan, Paco's, yeah.
A lot of stores are pushing people to use that, like Starbucks, just swipe your phone.
I'd rather not do that.
Did, I'm sorry, did Ted see where I?
We didn't get there yet.
We didn't get that far.
We didn't get there.
I asked, I asked, then we got doing those.
We're doing the third, the third printing.
Fortunately, he's not having to ride back and forth from school tonight.
Yeah.
Half hour, he's, he's print out.
Yeah.
He would have lost it after the first time, when he came back and there was already corrections, or changes we'd made.
That wouldn't have been good.
All right. Meanwhile, if you guys wanna look at the minutes from October eighth-
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
You know, we could, still could continue on that.
What, we'll do October eighth first?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve October eighth, if nothing, if, if, if anything is-
I'll second that, okay. Any discussion? Any more here? So, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Staying, staying?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, stop.
Oh, you see one?
No, no, no. How many do we need to approve that, uh, present? That's what I'm trying to read.
Four out of the five.
Well, uh-
Me, you, Bob, and Roger.
Okay, I'm just-
Okay, yeah, making sure, okay, um, October twenty-second, I'm gonna do it on this here. My storage, further?
Where, where, one of the, so, yeah, so, you're gonna go straight to the, to the, the last time we can do it, so, yeah. It's two hours, it's, I think it'll check out. Today is the, yeah, so, 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 so,
Um, I realized in the, uh, in the people present, that my name is not listed.
And the twenty second?
Twenty seconds, right, okay. Since I made motions and seconds, then I'll, I'll do it.
Okay, you had Roger?
Yeah.
He said it was two thousand and eighty.
Two thousand eight hundred and twenty. Okay, great, a few changes, anything else on that?
No, we were mentioned, we were mentioned about the lighting, and they were gonna.
Yes, should that be, I, I forget what, what was said.
For visibility, turn on at the entrance.
This is on.
No, no, no.
This is on the school?
Yeah.
We're. No, we're not on a school right now.
Well, I, in the minute, they are.
In the minutes.
In the minute, sir.
What was said?
Um, yeah, Mr., um.
Uh, Kachinsky?
Kachinsky, yeah. Anyway, he, he said that they would take light at the entryway under consideration, and have it installed.
So, we should.
Cause we told them not to turn on U C M P.
Yeah, Kachinsky.
Yes.
Okay, so, we could add. Add, uh, a sentence right before the last paragraph on the first page, that's Ken, Mr., uh, Kachinsky.
Yeah.
Agreed to, um, look at the lighting situation on the entrance?
Yes.
You look at, or?
Did you?
He said that they would go ahead and put one up again.
Yeah.
Did he say you were stall?
Marty, Marty brought up, yeah, Marty brought up the issue, that it was a dark, dark spot. Mr. Kachinsky said that they hadn't considered it, but it was a good idea, and they'd make it happen.
Okay. Okay. Couple of minor changes there, anything else, all in favor of those changes? There was, who's, who's, um, who made that motion?
I did, I did, I'm not clarifying, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of October twenty second, with the following administrative changes. Uh, Jamie, Larry Beadit, uh, is a member that night. Uh, line on the bottom of the first page dealing with, uh, lighting at the entryway, uh, his commune print hit down. Item three on page three of four, should be seven eighty-two Alfred Road, and the square foot of the property is two thousand eight hundred and twenty.
Okay, you seconded that? Who screwed the second out of that one?
Roger did.
Roger, uh.
I think you did, and you're.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
No.
And impose? Okay. Alright, so.
Give that, might I give that to?
Yeah, I'll give it to him, sorry.
What do, what minutes were these?
This is, October twenty second.
We were busy while you were playing.
Playing?
Yeah.
We need an internet connection.
We also approved of the October, what day was that, eighth?
Eighth.
Minutes, with no changes, approved as written, that was, uh, Bob made the motion, and Jamie seconded.
No, not on the eighth.
I'm sorry, Roger, who seconded that?
Roger?
Yeah, that was you, yeah, Roger seconded. Bob and Roger?
Bob and Roger.
Who's gonna take responsibility for signing, cause I wasn't there, and Jimmy wasn't there, so he gonna make Secretary pro temp?
What?
Sign the eighth.
I'll, I'll sign it.
Okay, so, it's, it's all changed, that's pretty good. Weren't you the chairman at the time?
I think I was.
You can't sign it, somebody else does, Roger, you sign it, okay? Thanks.
Okay.
I can't sign it, because I wasn't there.
Rich wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah.
So, somebody's gotta sign it.
Okay, that's for the town copy, right?
Well, yeah, that's for the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
No one gonna sign them?
No, I gotta make the changes. So.
I'll have to there.
Let's get back to Moteland.
Moteland.
So, they have right here, so, we have two copies, we've signed both?
Yes.
Okay, all in the same order, I guess. You don't have to put the date there. Jamie?
Oh, they showed me two of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's one.
Do you want these, Ted?
Yeah, does, I need one, yeah, gets, gets the other.
Thank you so much for having this meeting tonight.
You're welcome. Now, you had other questions?
Yeah, your question on.
You had a question, Ted, about.
Agenda.
Oh, the agenda, for next week's meeting.
Ask him, tell him he's.
Yeah, really agenda.
Okay.
But you were also asking about.
What?
I got, I got that.
You're gonna give me the money.
Yeah.
You were asking about an extra meeting in November, or?
Right, is there an extra meeting in November, Ted, or is it gonna be in December?
We're gonna meet every week.
No, it's, uh, we have an extra, the, um, the extra meeting on the nineteenth is to do, uh, as long as I'm in the chair.
From November?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we're not making progress, we're supposed to be done with this by the seventh of August. Wait, I didn't even touch the seventh of August.
What do you change?
So then, twelve, and then that's it.
And it would be tonight, December. The, uh.
Twelve.
Second would be twelve.
Second one in December.
Okay.
Okay, you again, appreciate all your time tonight.
Now, let's see, so we wanna jump right into the land use ordinance?
Yes, please.
Item one, review of new land use ordinance format, reorganization of districts and format changes, section one, two, four.
Is this the one we're using now?
Yeah, I believe.
That's why I could tell.
Mine's different.
The one I would.
Yeah, that's what I got.
What's that?
This is the change form, right?
Yes, the ones you, you start seeing there.
Wow, man.
We got.
April? No, it says amended June ten, twenty fifteen.
So that's, that's the copy of this one?
Yeah. You have the current, Bob.
Well, this one has a lot of changes that needed.
Ted, Ted, I never got the, um, the.
This is the one I was getting.
Here, that's this one.
Yeah. Oh, who bought the other one?
That's the one that was prepared right after town vote.
Right. Right after town vote?
That's the one I never bought.
That's the one that was approved.
Right.
And I don't have that.
Holy cow.
I don't have a copy of that.
You don't have a copy of that?
Of the approval, no.
It's in, I made one for everybody.
Oh, of somebody.
Yeah, gee.
Well.
Yeah.
I went through, I went through one, two, four.
Of that one?
Of the existing one, Bob?
Yeah, look at the changes.
Oh, no, 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 don't bring those changes up.
Holy.
We've already approved that.
Holy crap. I don't know.
Alright.
So, those are the ones we haven't even touched yet. We'll come back to those later.
Well, I thought we were doing section one, two, four.
We are, one, two, four of the.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't tweak those when we, when we did the vote.
Alright, let's look at section one, should be pretty, pretty forward.
Can I look at this, and see if it's any different from this?
I wonder if all this is, it's just.
We're just dealing with format, we're not dealing with content generally.
Yeah, no, I know, that's why I probably can follow with this one.
Okay.
Authority, um, this one has church, I believe, that's a purchase, jurisdiction, you added several.
So, what, they all match up?
Oh, no, this is so much different.
See, the problem is severability, which is always in the front of every, um, of every, uh, maybe I should underline that. Severability is something that's always in the very, in the very front of every zoning ordinance. Basically, what it says is that there's an error in the ordinance, it does not mean that the entire ordinance is, is void. If there's a section that violates a state law or a federal law, it does not mean the entire ordinance is therefore rendered moot, or rendered, uh, ineligible to be, uh, to be enforced.
So.
Valid, I believe, is the term.
Definitely should be, are you saying it's, it should be first thing?
Yeah, it was buried back in section twelve two.
So, he's moved it, now it's moved first.
It's moved up to the beginning, because this is where you usually look for, in fact, I dealt with the severability issue, um, that the reason I became aware of this is I was dealing with the severability issue, and, um.
Here?
Yeah, so people calling me that we were unconstitutional or something, and I couldn't find it, and I said, oh, you kidding, it was basic ordinance right on one.
No, it's never been in there.
It's, I found it, it was in section twelve two.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it was in there.
It was in there, but it was buried back.
In other words, you wanna wave it first?
I wanna bring it up first, bring it up where, where it belongs with everything, you've got authority, what this chapter does, what it says up front is, this is our authority, this is where it comes from, this is how it operates, this is our jurisdiction, and if there's anything wrong, and it's, we have a severability clause in here, and so the whole ordinance isn't rendered, uh, moot or invalid.
So, it ain't thrown out the window?
Yeah, exactly, so it's all up front, not, you know, buried somewhere else in the ordinance.
I don't apologize, I've done a long review, I can give you a decent one for you later.
Please. Um, do you, do you, I wonder if I got an extra one, am I on an extra one, Bob? Will we go luck?
No.
Do we?
Spending more time away from here than here.
Go, go, go see if Bob has one.
I mean, the focus you said was on the format.
It's the format, it's not content, you know, there's a lot in here, I'd love to change on the content, but remember, what we're doing here is, we're gonna take this to town meeting and say, look, guys, we haven't changed any real wording, nothing substantive has changed, all we're doing is changing the format of the existing ordinance, turning it over into the format that it's going to be. Now, a new format that makes it easier to read, in which districts are in chapters, and their own separate headings. Things are organized more easily.
I'm gonna move this forward, cause we're gonna be done by December.
Well, we gotta be done by general personnel.
When, when is the town meeting?
Okay. Uh, as soon as we finish this.
In other words, the select member waiting on us?
Yeah.
So.
So, we're not looking at what this says right now, we're just looking at how, how it all laid out.
How it fits together, and what makes sense.
Yeah.
So, your severability is gonna be one point one?
Severability is gonna be one point five. Huh? It's gonna be one point five in, in the section.
Yeah, but I thought you wanted it under authority.
That's what I thought too.
That's what you just said.
Yeah, section one is authority, all of section one is authority, we've got section one, 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 two, one, three, one, four, one, five, severability is one, five.
Well, the way you had just explained it, you said that was gonna be the first thing, as you opened the thing up.
You meant just the first page?
In the first chapter, it's in the first chapter, in first section.
What I, what I like to do is, is have, um, like a motion on each section, so we can move forward, so.
Okay.
Good, well, we're not, not looking at the wording.
No.
Right?
Give us the gray areas.
On, on page six?
Page six.
Yeah, you got what, seven amendments to the land use ordinance, and I'm sorry, I took on too, one one, but the next one should be one, seven, one, authority, then one, seven, point two for the procedures. And then if you go over to page seven, you do have the one, seven, three. Following, following down, um.
All the way through.
Ah, yeah.
It's just inconsistent.
Good catch. One, seven, one, it starts with one, seven.
Okay, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Your.
So you're saying it should be, so authority should be one, seven, one.
Right. Procedure should be one, seven, two.
And then below that, one, seven, two, one?
One, seven, two, one, correct.
It just did. Seven, two, one, one.
And then, hold on, let me get these, I wanna get these, I wanna change it on the fly, okay, and two, one will go to one. Right?
Yeah.
So, most of the new ones don't have that format, so. That, that's the way we wanna go?
Well, yeah, you gotta be able to follow it.
Yeah.
You need one, seven, it should have started with one, seven, right?
It did, it's up to the top.
Yeah, start with one, seven.
Yeah, one, seven, one, one, seven, two.
One, seven, one is the authority, and seven, two is the procedure.
Once you put in your one, seven, one, in there, the one will end up.
Yeah, one should be A, B, C, D, and the other one, then it should go to one parentheses.
Okay, and those, those paragraphs all need to be shifted over.
Yeah.
Same with the two point two, and that would shift over to be under the other one, this one, these ones are almost there, one and two have to be shifted over to come under the third number.
How far do we go with, with, go all the way to one, seven, two, one, A? All the way to the letters?
No, if you.
Well, we do in some places.
Yeah, we do.
Cause I'm looking right here, this, it's, you know, it's all five, eleven, eight, point four.
Well, that's the easiest way to refer to it.
It really is.
Find it easier.
When you're gonna be talking to somebody.
Take a lot, a lot more work on Ted's part to.
But it's, but they're, they're like that later on.
I mean, I, I would say Ted, take all of this section one and be doing.
Yeah, you gotta.
Just renumber them.
Yeah.
Renumber, and then move the paragraphs.
To reform that.
So, even the effective, one, six, the first page should be changed to.
I committed to sharing with you, Bob, so.
That should be one, six, two, A.
Yeah.
No, it's four num, four numbers, and then we get in the As, and we want four numbers, one, two, you know, there's gonna be four numbers, we're not gonna have As in the middle, and Bs.
That's what I was wondering.
But that's what, but that's what he's saying, is.
But we do see that in section five, the existing standards do have, all the way to the letters, five.
Where are you?
Well, in, in section five, I see five, point ten, point two, point one, point C, so.
It's a hard part of stuff.
I haven't gotten the five yet.
No, 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 he's used.
She has, has a.
Using that as an example.
Which format do we wanna go with?
Well, no, they.
But you know, look here.
Look here, it's. Yeah, so some are, some don't, but this. Yeah, so I don't know why.
This is numbers and numbers. This is numbers and letters.
Yeah, we get the letters after the first four numbers.
Okay, so if you go back to one.
Why we do with the first four numbers is because most of the stuff is gonna be in, uh, one point, one, point one, kind of.
So, so if you go back to one point six?
Yeah.
We go one point six, point two, and then we go automatically to A, B.
And D should be over here, it shouldn't be indent like this. Yeah, A should be one.
Yeah.
B should be, yeah, see, this is the first one I did, I did this a long time ago.
Yeah.
I didn't have another.
And then all of those paragraphs gotta get shifted over to the left too.
Yeah.
So this should be.
I can't do this on an apple, you gotta go back.
Maybe one, six, two, three.
Two.
It's much harder to do this on an apple.
One.
One, six, two.
Point, one point six, point two, point one, point two.
Okay. Come on.
Yeah, yeah. Two.
It's okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Three. Yeah, one, four, seven, two.
Right.
Two, one, two. Numbers are off.
Yeah. The way I'm looking at it, is this what this? One, seven, point. Yeah, follow. One, seven, one, one, seven, two, one, proposed letter, A, B, C.
Yeah, that's how that works.
And then lower case G.
Yeah, then what about the As down below? So I think you go uppercase, lowercase?
Yeah, that's what you do, I mean, if you look how, how we did it. How we did it, and if you go to any of the districts that we've already done, like any of the sixes or any of the seven. The eights.
Two point two.
You know, it's, it's very simple, it's, it's three sets of numbers, and then we go to letters, small letters, and then we go to two, uh, numbers in parentheses, then we go to letters in parentheses, then we go to the Is.
Two point one.
I, 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 one, and that's how we did all the other ones.
Okay, that makes sense.
And this one was done before we did those, so this, this is way, this is from.
Okay.
So this all needs to be changed, actually points to the way we did it.
So, so you know what needs to be done, it's, there's.
Yeah, I haven't looked at this.
Lot of inconsistency from one section to another, as we flip through this variety of different.
Well, that's what I was saying, yeah, see, that's what I was saying, that very, the person, it's a month and a half ago, that we should, we should get one, and it would help everybody, Dan, after you get one that is exactly right.
Yeah.
That ought to be the model that we use, if we're looking at everything else, 'cause we're all gonna have little differences.
Do you know, uh, model to, that we can use, uh?
Well, I think, I think we started real good here.
Well, we've already done the models in, in section eight. That's, uh, what we just passed, those are the models we used.
Make sure section eight is like we were.
Well, section eight, all the, all those zones that we did, section eight, point one, point twenty one. If you look in your existing zoning ones.
One twenty two.
See how that's done?
Yep.
That's consistent on all those districts.
What page do you want? Should be capital A. Should be an A, B.
Right.
A. And those should be capital A's.
We don't use capitals.
Don't use capitals?
We don't use capitals.
So you're alternating A and B? Okay.
What page do you want?
We were looking at ninety four real quick, but we, so this is, we've missed, I've missed this one.
Regrouping?
Yeah.
Well, it's still gonna have to be changed and come over, even if he's using, even if he's using all lower cases, then this has gotta be numbered in here somewhere.
So, so Ted, let's go to section set one, point seven, point two, point one. Proposed amendment by municipal officers planning board for a punt petition.
Right.
So, under that, the first subheading you had was one.
Yep.
Or, yeah, should that, that should be A.
Yeah. No, it should be one.
So then you get into five digits?
Yep, no, four digits.
No.
One, seven, one, then it's one, proposal amendment, then the next one's A, B, C, D, E.
So, proposed amendment would say one.
Wait, the authority is one point seven one, the procedure is one point seven two.
Yep.
And then under seven, two.
It's one point seven, two, one.
Right, so then when you get to, if the proposal is initiated by a municipal officer.
That's A.
That would be A, lowercase a.
Lowercase a.
Okay.
And then.
So then.
Below that is the, A becomes the.
A, B, C, D.
One parentheses, it becomes a parentheses.
Now, let's get onto this next.
Yeah. Prior to a public hearing, the individual, that would be one parentheses.
Right.
So, then go back.
And Steve doesn't wanna do that.
Page ninety five has, uh, has that very format.
'Cause they are all under. So that has that, that's consistent with that.
Consistent with that.
Okay, so that's.
That's what we were struggling on, make sure we were.
We had one, seven, point two, one, seven, point two, one.
Yep.
So this is one, seven, two, two.
Point two.
So this would be lowercase a.
Lowercase b.
C.
Lowercase c, d.
So this would be one, two, E, F, G. Yeah.
This hand had two, three, eight. Establishment of zoning, you have to produce more for.
So, what about that, the last one? Did that just say three?
Hmm?
This, this last one?
Yep.
Did that just have a three before?
No, because I think, looking at the elements, this would be one point seven.
Oh, okay, one, two, two.
Yep.
So that would be here, to follow with the same, we're just number this one, one, two, three, one, two, three, four.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And, um, Ted, I have just a little question, the, um, where it's one, point seven, point one.
It should be in there.
Were there periods after the, the first set of numbers? Some of the, some of the, these have periods after numbers and letters, others have no periods. Like, one point seven, point one, no period.
Right.
Okay.
Which one are you on?
One, seven.
Yeah, I know, one point seven, I.
No period, one point, seven, point one, no period, right?
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah, that, that.
Yeah, it looks kinda funky when you, uh, when you put the period afterwards, and it also messes up the pagination.
Yeah.
It says you've gotta, you've gotta run on sentence. Yeah. No, I don't.
Yeah, right.
You know?
So, yeah, I like how the, the one point seven, point three, as I've got it seen, printed right in front of me.
That's how it would be.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean at the bottom, yeah.
Except for one thing, uh, would, wouldn't that be capitalized? 'Cause one, seven, one, one, seven, two are capital letters. So wouldn't one, seven, three be capital letters?
Yep.
Yep.
It would.
That's all caps.
Yeah, you've got to be in the number.
No, number can't be a capital letter. See how this is, Bob, it's one point seven, point two, that's all capital. That one's not.
All capital letters.
Yes. Let me ask you, is that something we wanna do, 'cause.
I think it looks good.
Section eight doesn't do that, I don't know if it makes a difference.
Well.
Page ninety five, they're all, um.
Yeah, but it's the main. Tom, I think we're setting a precedent.
So, which one do we want?
We're precedent here.
Yeah.
Which will turn around and, so.
Is that one?
Follows you around the rest.
I can go either way, I can go whichever one we choose.
I think since the precedent.
Yeah.
Then that precedent will follow through to eight.
Yeah.
Unless we took eight as the model, which so far has been a good model. And then. Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I wouldn't have a strong feeling either way if it was.
Okay.
Remember, the idea is to make it readable and to make it pop out for people to see.
Okay, capital letters work.
You know, capital letters work, sometimes it doesn't work all the time, but you know, sometimes it works, and sometimes you'll see, I'll analyze.
And that ought to bring all those paragraphs back in line.
Okay. So, there.
Okay, and two?
Well, and two, that means all those things should be capital letters as well, in the first page, page eight.
Yep.
So, Ted, I think, I think we're gonna run in, in looking in section eight, looking everywhere else, that you're gonna be making more to capital letters than maybe worth doing.
That might be the case.
So I, I would consider it back in number one, maybe make the font a little bigger, like it looks to be in section two.
One thing to remember, gentlemen, what you're looking at right now is, is an, uh, eleven point, everything in here is pretty much eleven point.
Yeah.
Except for the big chapter headings, and understand, eleven point is going to make this a thicker document, because the document kernel isn't ten point.
So, so it's more readable?
Eleven point makes it more readable, you don't need an electron microscope to read it.
That's.
But it's gonna make it fatter, because you're.
Yeah, yeah, more, more, more paper.
More paper.
So.
So, we're going from ten pages to twenty pages?
Well, it's not that bad, but it does increase its, it does increase its size when you go to eleven point, it probably increases it by fifteen to twenty percent. Over, over, overall.
Do, is ten too small, you think, to read?
I, I, it's up to you guys, where do you feel comfortable, you like this type set? Look at, look at your current ordinance, and look at this ordinance, and tell me which one you think is better. Ten saves space and paper and ink, but what? The ten point is in the current ordinance.
Right. Yeah.
Then make this smaller. This looks like the same size, except we went, we've got different here somewhere.
Yeah, those are big, these are bigger just because there are headings, headings are bigger, we make a distinction on headings, so.
This is a, this is a heading.
That's a small cap, that's a small cap, which is what Jamie had said you should be doing in there, so it's starting to change.
Wow, so.
Um, when we get, when we get to these.
I mean, you tell me what you, what you feel more comfortable with.
These are different, I, I like these ones.
You like the small, you like the ten point?
I'm, I'm used to it, I'm used to it, it's what we've been doing after years, so.
You don't wanna brag too many years, though.
Not too many, probably, as we get older, we'll be wishing they were bigger, but.
Hey, no, that's what you get, they say you go from one twenty five to one fifty, they.
Then you have someone else to read it for you.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you wanna go to ten point, I can go to ten point.
What do, what do we say on the font size? Let me make the call on that.
Up to you guys, I'd like both.
Both.
I don't see.
That's sounding like a politician.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I mean, look at the two of them side by side, I don't see much difference between that zones and that materials.
Well, look at the text, don't look at the headings. See the difference here? I think this is where he might be talking about being eleven.
That looks like twelve.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot bigger than this.
Yeah.
The headings are in bigger font, okay?
Know that.
How about, look at eight, look at eight point two, three, two, those list.
Page one hundred?
Yeah, one hundred and one, though, that font is not this.
Right.
So that's a lot clearer, but if this is eleven and this is ten, then it's as good as eleven.
Right.
Twelve is.
Better.
Clearer than both.
Twelve is the best word, eleven, five, you, you can get away with eleven, five, and it looks like twelve, but it does say ink and space. I mean, once you get used to the eleven, this does look a little small, but.
Yeah. Okay, where are we at, on section two?
Well, um, section one, all, okay.
Yeah, I know, I know what you gotta do there, but do you guys wanna go with eleven or ten? Or do you wanna wait and think about it?
Okay, eleven.
That's, no, ten.
Yeah, I'd say we go with ten. Okay, ten.
Ten for the body, and then, uh, we, we have headings of eleven and twelve and thirteen.
Yeah, that, that way, that'll stand out.
Right, yeah.
Okay, but turn up for the, if you try it eleven, you're gonna turn and stretch it too much.
Yeah, I wanna get it.
So we're going with, we'll go with.
Ten for the body.
Ten for the body, yeah. Number, uh, or section two has, the font is, is, uh, pretty big, that's at least twelve.
Which on section two?
Section two, yeah.
Yeah, we're paying was out, that's, uh, that font is, uh.
Come on.
Thirteen or fourteen.
Well, on the, let's say residential districts there?
Yeah, establishment zoning district.
Two point two, and below it, anyways, that, they'll all need to be.
No, it's twelve, those are twelves.
So they can be down to ten, they look so big. All right, and the, the rest?
Like small print, big print.
Well, on the, uh, the bottom, page nine.
Well, how about going through two?
Okay.
Under your two, two, is that classification getting crossed out, they're coming out of there?
Yeah.
Okay, then under two, two, two point two, point one, under that, it should be just one, two, three.
Yep.
The same under two, 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 three, two, four, and two, five, one, two, three, get rid of the first three numbers.
Well, it certainly does look less cluttered that way, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And that's consistent with the other stuff too. Okay, two, three, look at, two, three, one is right, man. See, I, I don't know, when you, when you switch like that from font, that, that makes me think somebody's made a mistake.
What's that?
Like, if you look at the bottom of page eight, from two, three, and then you go to two, three, one, and I understand that it's a subset, but doesn't it look like somebody screwed up?
Oh, 'cause the font's smaller?
Yeah.
But it's intentionally, 'cause two, three is a, is supposed to be taller, you think it should be?
See, two, see, I think the numbers should stay consistent, and I think the heading, like official land use, that could, that could be bold, as, as. Even, even these ones could be a, a smaller bold, since it's a subset. But then these have to come back up.
I agree with you, but I, I don't know if Word can do that that easily.
Oh, yeah, you did, highlight it and push the number you want.
You're the computer whiz.
It's, uh, depending on how you put these numbers in, has it outlined, using the outline method, or you just type in a number?
Type in a number, well, I'm, I'm using the, uh, I'm using, uh, the, uh, the number and function, but it doesn't always work where you want it to. The science explains what you do. You know, the other problem is, I'm, I put this in a different, I'm, I'm, I put this in a different background page, because there's something very funky about it, where it alternates margins from one page to the next, if you ever look at it, they're alternating. And so I put this in a totally different, I'm pasting in this, into a totally different format to try to get rid of that stupid alternating margins.
Yeah, well, what you've done is taken one kind of font from this one and put it in the middle of other kind of fonts over here, you gotta watch that.
Well, they're all the same font.
No.
They're not.
Ted, I think the size of the font in, in the heading, two point three, point two, to two point three, point three, and three point four, they, are they the same?
They should be.
Oh, you're three.
Huh? Two point three, point two.
Yep.
The heading there.
Yeah, they should be.
Changes the official land use map, going then to the heading of two point three, point three, looks like that is a.
That's a big font.
Right.
Which one is.
The text is the same, you notice that?
Right, so two point three, point three, and two point three, point four need to be consistent with two point three, point one and two point three, point two.
Three is not, three is, uh.
Three and four.
Right. Three is a ten. Oh, I can't, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't do this, I, I, this is a Mac interpreting word, and it's not doing a good job. Steve's not letting me do what I wanna do.
So then we, we repeat with two point three lots split by district boundaries.
Should be four.
I assume that should be four.
Why is it in that one? You got two point three overlay.
Well, I didn't know if it was supposed to be two point.
Because you're very, Amy, it should be two point four.
Yeah, so, and then you'd have two point four point one and two point four point two.
Yeah.
Below. I agree, but the, um, it looks like all those two point fours are indented too far, they should come to the left a little bit more. As well, the two point four point one and two point four point two, I would think to be consistent with how I'm adding.
Yeah, okay, come up with one. You have one?
What are we looking at?
Couldn't figure out one. It's basically.
Yeah.
You see, you see how it works, it's saying you got two provisions that you can use.
So why don't you do that provision one and provision two?
So what I would do, no, no, what I would do is this, in two point, make two point four point one before, when a lot is divided by, and then just have the two things below it as the two provisions. Number one and two.
So make this. Yeah, perfect. I gotta get them back, I mean.
See what I'm talking about?
I can't make this one.
No, you're it.
But even then, even if you did that, they, they have headings.
That doesn't have a heading though.
Well, make that, make that thing a heading, make that language there a heading.
That's a lot of, that's a whole paragraph, whole sentence, right?
Yeah, but it's lots split by. Okay, so, yeah, lots split by district boundaries.
Well, here's a question, do we have to always have a heading, or we might start trying to come up and hinting heading names, just for the sake of coming up with one.
Yeah, but your heading isn't standing out.
Right.
Did you locate it, because if you don't, you're trying to play squinty.
So what do we do in this case?
This.
Well, I'll do anything you want to hear, because I got new language for this anyways, because this thing is.
That's different than the language for that whole session, whatever you do.
Well, how can you get new language if that's what we brought over?
No, 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 I'd say in, in the new form, and if we win, we get past the format, we'll look for language. So, all right, so we'll just make it two four one, two four two.
I don't, I don't see what's wrong with it, we've got two three lots split, split by district boundaries. So, so two point three one, you could start, put the one by, when a lot is split by district boundaries, it's set the boundaries of an overlay district, the following shall apply.
Oh, you already got two point three point one already? It would be two point four.
Or two point four.
Right.
Two point four point one, two point four point two.
Yeah.
Yeah, just leave it there.
And you can't, and you don't have a heading.
Yeah, we just don't make it a heading.
No heading for it.
That works.
Yeah, it works there.
And the, it's indented too far, there.
Yeah, yeah.
And one little picky thing, uh, the very last clause, number two there, it's two four two, looks like it's right justified, so the text is aligned on the right side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what happened.
It's all justified, all the.
Well, the, the word width seems to be.
Yeah.
Farther than, I think that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you wanted, you wanted to justify it all to the left, and.
See the word width? The last paragraph, yeah.
Something's funny going on there.
Maybe extra spaces or some.
Right. Paragraphs, width.
Two point four point two.
Well, that's, you know, the problem is, it's, uh, I see it. Yeah. No, it's, the problem is the, uh, the indentation.
Yeah.
And I can't do it easily, because this, this is a different format, so. Hanging at two, we get a left, and it's justified, the right justified, the left. Doesn't do anything.
Is there, you have extra spacing there, or?
Yeah. Something going on.
No, what it's probably doing is, no, what it's probably doing is in such a way that it indented itself, because otherwise, your, your, your word at the end would be split when it covers to, to, to the new line, like a dash.
Yeah, for some reason, that's different than the rest of them, so. Well, so that, that, you, you can clean that up, what, so we're ready to move on to section three definitions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Are they all there?
Yeah, except for that stupid, you guys, you know, you guys can't see it. I don't know why Dan put hyperlinks everywhere through this whole document, but they keep popping up, I keep believing in them, and they keep popping up. And I really, I'm gonna, oh.
Oh, don't forget, simple, how much, how many years ago was that? And the technology of.
They hyperlink buildings and businesses all the time, it's just like, what are we doing? I mean, even then, even then.
Maybe he did that for landmarks.
Well, when you touch on it, it's supposed to give you a definition, but why would you do it on a building? Buildings count as construction. It just keeps coming back, they, they, you kill them, they're like, go for it, wrap one on the head, and it comes back in another.
So I, I see three different fonts on pages ten and eleven, three different fonts, three different font sizes.
Yeah.
Three should be construction of language.
No, that's three point one.
Three point one is construction of language, three point two is definitions, and then you have, and we have, uh, and we have small caps.
Yeah, for each term.
Yeah, and those, and this is in.
These are different.
Yeah.
Can't tell, because this is an apple, and. Okay, tell me what it is, what is that? It's a ten, this is all ten point, in two of you guys.
Oh, well, the first three point one is, it looks like it's eleven.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, you, you know, are you saying you guys don't want to have headings that are larger than, you, you don't want them all the same font?
No, the, the text below it, the paragraph, under construction of language, that should be smaller, ten, right?
Yeah, and you guys have agreed that you, you want it all ten now.
Yeah, it looks like.
That's eleven.
Not, yeah, but not the, not the caption.
No, the captions, the captions are gonna vary, we're not gonna do the captions the same font, because that's gonna, then it's gonna look just like it does right now. Everything's gonna be ten point, you won't be able to tell what's important and what isn't.
So, so you're gonna make all the body ten?
You're gonna make all the body ten.
Good. Right.
And the headings are gonna decrease, they'll go from, like the heading at the top, which is all caps, I think that's fourteen point.
So come down to twelve.
It come down to thirteen, twelve, and then eleven, and then eventually, I don't think we have any headings there.
So make a note in automobile graveyard definition, it looks like that's some larger font size in there.
Oh, no, I just saw it stands out, so you can peck at it.
Yeah, the same. Automobile, oh, automobile, yeah, that is a different font.
Oh, that is, yeah.
I don't know what it is.
Boy, I, I feel like I'm getting picky in all this, but in automobile, automobile graveyard, the, the numbers one, two, three, four are, are different than on bedroom, one, two, three, four, if they're indented several, it's indented in like half inch.
No.
Plus there's a period on some and not on others.
Yeah, I can't help you with that one. Well, yeah, you can, you cut the period under the, after the one, in bedroom.
Well, I believe the period, just, I would just indent it cleaner like the one bedroom, like it looks like in bedroom.
Bedroom, are you guys on automobile graveyard?
I see what Tom's carrying, too.
Comparing automobile graveyard, if you look at how that's written with that font and indentation.
Look at the format.
And then look at the format for bedroom, and the bedroom looks nice and clean.
Yeah. That's really huge, I mean, that's a huge separation between.
Yeah, you could make it less, right, but I like, I like it this.
The format.
Should be consistent with the graveyard, one or the other. There's no indent on automobile graveyard.
No.
You got six slices over on bedroom. Six spaces.
Yeah.
The cabinets by the letter. Even if it were the normal two.
Right, that was good.
Yeah, whatever you decide, they should just be the same, that's all.
Right.
It's gonna be hanging by two.
Yeah.
Hanging by a point two, yeah, that works. And then bedroom, the same, that bedroom would just, you need that to be, the numbers can't be.
Well, and that's. Okay, so that's, that's few pages.
No, I, I mean.
That's few pages look pretty good.
Which one you want? Well, we'll go back to your dwelling.
Dwelling?
Yeah, just turn on, look how it's indented on one, page fifteen, I'm just looking at numbers, that's all I was just saying. This is indented in the one, two, three, four, here. And then you go back to seventeen flooding.
So dwelling is another one to look at.
That does have headings though.
Yeah, I don't mind the headings, but we gotta move one, two out to the.
Anyway, okay, good.
Now, are all our definitions in here?
Yeah.
I don't see windmill.
You guys looking at education.
Yep, we have had windmill, windmill.
That should be numbered one, two and three public, should be one.
Well, you should, it, it's not. No, I'm just saying, we've had a definition for windmill.
It's not in the current ordinance.
I mean, the. We have a definition for, um, wind.
Wind farm, something, yeah.
In here?
We spent weeks on top of weeks.
Yeah, but it was, it was.
No, nothing on wind.
Okay, it's under, but where it is, is underneath, uh.
Utility? Hoes, uh.
Wind energy conservation system includes one twenty eight.
Yeah, well, we're on the definition.
Yeah, but I think we had it in there.
It's own special, but we're only in the definition section.
Right.
What is that?
It's just not in the definition.
Okay, so after, bring that in.
So Ted, formatting again on educational facility with numbering and indents and things.
Yeah.
Flooding.
So do you? On page one twenty eight is the definition of the small wind energy conversion system in the medium?
One twenty eight, yeah.
Page one twenty, I didn't know if you wanted to put those in our definitions, or leave eight twenty like it is. With it all, right?
Well, how you feel comf, do you feel comfortable telling folks that we're moving definitions from one section to another?
I don't wanna do that.
But you want definitions.
I know, but we gotta be, one thing we gotta be careful of is not changing too much of the text.
What he's, what, the purpose of this is just to go to him and say we're reformatting.
Right.
Not padding, deleting.
Because, about going by the simple. Move definition that's in here later, to put it up to definition that's up there. Yeah, that's all, um, I see what you're saying, the, see, it almost looks like, I, I like the definition right underneath here, and then just at, under definition, you can see, see page one twenty eight. Right, oh, hey, like windmill, just turn it on like you said, and put the section there, eight, whatever it is.
To just copy both places.
Sorry, yeah.
Page one twenty eight's the shoreline zone.
I said whatever.
He's looking at the other, other thing, and I don't see it, I can't find it real quickly in there.
Yeah, our current ordinance, it's on picture.
Let's, let's make note of that beside that one, that definition.
I'm feeling real good about that.
What?
It's pretty big cha, it's pretty big addition. I'm just.
Now you can, it looks like this was, this is, you know what this is? Oh, jeez, I understand.
The overlay district?
No, what this is, this is, this is a state ordinance.
No, we did, we did this. We did that all here.
Okay, but this is the format of a state ordinance, it's the format of a, of a standalone state ordinance, because it has def, has purpose and intent, authority, applicability, and definitions, that's the format of a state, standalone ordinance. So it's a standalone ordinance that's been dumped into, into our, into our ordinance, is what it is.
Well, we didn't dump it in, we thought through that.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, but, but, but this is, you don't need a purpose and intent, you don't need an authority, you don't need an applicability, and definition should be in there, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a conditional use in an ordinance that has purpose and intent, authority, applicability, already established, that's what I'm saying.
So Ted.
Yes, sir.
Numbering and formatting under the definition of lot.
Page twenty.
Yep. Before you go on from there. Did you get that, Ted?
No. Takes me a while, but one of the, the school in the US, page twenty. All right, what about, uh, lot?
So just, we've got several sub definitions, I mean, everywhere else we've numbered them?
What page are you on, Jamie?
Twenty, twenty.
Under lot, back corner.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that.
So we, then we would number one.
When you get done with that, I got another.
Lot, comma, back.
Comma.
Number two, lot, comma, corner. They're all numbered in other, similar things are numbered into other locations.
Yeah, they should be numbered. Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at lot lines and saying, what's wrong with that?
Oh, right, I was saying, that should be, lot should be similar to lot lines.
So for lot lines, have they indented the right way, are we gonna make them all like that, because others didn't, originally a building or something, then.
I didn't change that, guys, this is great on the ordinance.
Right.
Well, we can, get it correct now, but, um, bed, bedroom has no indentation, and lot lines does, so.
Yeah, I think they all need to come out. Even, that's how all the other ones, that's how.
With no indent.
No indent.
To the number.
Yeah, the one should be under the first letter L.
Yeah. Wait a minute, we just, I just indented them at your insistence, now you're saying go back?
We didn't insist on, you go back, we were using bedroom as the example, right? Bedroom one, two, three was up here at the corner, what you said was.
Put them in, and I did put them in.
They were, they were already in, one, two, and three.
Yeah, but they're on the edge, you, you wanna indent them, because that's part of the, that's under that heading, don't you?
Well, that's not what we did.
Let's look at.
Well, that's the one way we're comparing it to.
Uh, seven, five.
No, I, I just did it, because I said, you said you weren't on the indent, so I just indented it. Dwelling, no.
I think we were talking about the, the space was more of the issue there.
What space?
The words.
The words.
The number and the.
That's not a hard, yeah, but, but the number was indented under, under dwelling, I mean, you look at dwelling, the number's indented, so you know that's part of dwelling.
Yeah, that's, I, I like it that way, so that, you're gonna do.
The word said we were comparing bedroom to the one that we just finished, I'm not at all.
Which one?
Dwelling.
It issues an automobile graveyard as well as bedrooms.
Bedroom is indented as well.
Well.
Bedroom.
Which one?
Was not.
So which one have you been doing?
I've been indenting.
The denting, the numbers go in.
And indentamal.
Right, so indentamal, really doesn't matter.
And it really doesn't matter.
And the indent.
The indent helps to visually make, make it look like it's a, it's a, under lot line.
And it's indented left four with a hanging point two.
Good.
All of them, they're all gonna be indent.
There was.
Four with, with point two.
On page nineteen, historical structure, there's some extra lines before that, but.
Wait, we never got into historical structures. That's already in our order.
Yeah, come to find.
We did that slide in.
Looks like there's just extra line, blank lines.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Nineteen ninety-six. It's before our time.
It's been there forever.
You get that, Ted? Extra blank lines there. Historic structure. Historic structure.
All right, that's, so that's gonna have to be point four, it's point two five, it's gotta be hanging at two instead of point two five.
And between health and historic.
And then the before is six point, you want it zero?
Which one you want?
Spacing between lines.
No, I'm, I'm just looking at the historic structure, the heading.
There's a gap between health services and historic structure.
Oh, good, you don't want?
Yeah, there's two returns in there, there should have been one.
Yeah.
Or maybe there's three.
Actually, quite frankly, I just took the spacing out, so I'm gonna put that back in.
Okay.
Format is paragraph, this is very hard on Apple. I'm gonna put point six two four each, each paragraph, there we go, there, that makes a better.
Four.
The A's will go point six two.
And then, medical marijuana.
Let me catch up, guys, okay, let me just, I'm almost there, let me just finish this so I don't.
We have too many things hanging, so to speak.
The bold.
Whoa, that didn't work, it's gotta be eight. Oh, we have four, no, it's not four, it's point six. There we go, now we go, now we go. What's the next one, Tom?
Medical marijuana caregiver. Production facility. Your, your bold was reversed. Make the heading bold and the, the body, no, not bold.
Matopole marijuana, oh goodness gracious, where'd that come from? That's not in ordinance like that.
And then space afterwards, extra space after that paragraph.
Yeah, well, you have to look at these spacing, cause.
Doesn't appear to be in the ordinance poorly.
Like that monopoly. And motel or hotel and movie theater, all of these are different sizes.
I think it's all these long. That's Monopol.
Yeah.
It's not mon.
Monopoly.
Oh. Monopoli.
No, but all of these, all of these pages are a little bit different.
Yeah, after, after the paragraph, it's a lot.
Yeah, these bottom three are the same. This is the same as this and this one's the same as those.
That's something, I wonder if it can just be, select them all and.
No, it'd take, it'd take the space in between these two when you select them all. You gotta go into them individually.
That needs to be a, a real.
Yeah.
That, that, see, net development density, has some italics there, they need to be italics.
Right.
And we should get rid of that, make it consistent with the others. Just one.
Big two. Yep.
One without the print C. All right, where are you guys next, Monopol, LeBonte, Monopol?
Yeah, well, no, the spaces from there to the bottom, they're all different sizes between each of the major group. So, those all need to get the same, whatever they are.
The paragraph spacing is, is different there than above. Let's see, we go with six? Some, some cases it's six. Let's see what it shows. It's usually six, I don't know what's happening. One, uh, there it is, six, I've got it. I've lost, I've lost the tool, toolbar, you know, that's, oh, it's just.
What I need to do is put my cursor here, hit return.
Yeah, we just go, one spacing is six.
If they love a cursor, they have the right spot.
Who's that?
You change that one and they'll find it on there, it's, you eventually see the rest of your document.
Using those little touchpads, driving crazy. I'll probably select things that, I mean, just keeps, just breathe over and then move over.
Yeah. Well, I can't. Tell them I said it's time to go.
I can't.
That's a hint. They do in the restaurants, right? Stay there too long.
You lift your finger.
I wanna copy something or cut in or taster, I can't get far enough, the highlighter, I'm not the best, I'm pushing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, show some self fun.
No, we know it's not, glad you're doing it.
Okay, net development density.
That about the plan, you should just make it one, two, three.
Be a italic.
Get rid of the V's.
That's interesting, why isn't that good?
No, it was important to somebody.
Guess so. Wait a minute, we, oh yeah.
Was it italic sample?
You guys don't mind if we reduce one thing that isn't consistent, though, do wanna make consist, all the adopted revised things should be really reduced down to like eight point?
Right.
Work, yeah.
Cause they, they're.
How long do you have to keep those for?
We won't, as, as soon as, well, you know, it's helpful, but what happens is, as soon as, as we, as we, we're doing, if we get to the point where we do a, you know, a repeal and replace, we won't have them ever again. They're nice to have from a standpoint of, you can see the history through.
Yeah.
But they clutter up the thing like a crazy. Especially when you've made like five, five different year adjustments in the same paragraph. It's cluttered. So, where are we, where are you guys now?
Hit daycare center.
Yeah, there's a space.
No space, and then, that, my thing, then recent flood plain soils, um, there's a space after that paragraph before all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, soil names.
Yeah.
That's in a chart.
It is a chart?
It's a chart.
All right, well, that, put it in that, like that. And then solid waste, did you see something before that?
Replacement systems on twenty five, one and two, get rid of the friends and put in the periods.
Where, where are you, replacement?
Replacement system.
Get rid of the what?
Friends.
Right, okay.
Just put periods and shit.
Well, I was taking right out of a document.
Hey, I'm sure we had a lot of prep in it.
Where'd that came from?
For numbering all schools.
Oh, that came from flood.
Oh, yeah.
That's where that came from. So this is gonna be, again, numbered, come on. That way.
Yeah, you got it backwards.
Yeah.
It really, it was, it was the normal way, I think you're writing, you know, I'll turn it upside down, then you can do.
There we go. Oh, thank goodness. Hey, come on, get in there, get in there.
Where are you? Which one are you on?
What am I doing, I'm trying to, uh?
No, 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 I'm just asking the group here.
Well, we're on replacement system.
You're the R's.
Yeah. So I think you, you working on that, Ted?
I'm working on trying to get my formatting palette to come up. Yeah, I, I, okay, what's next?
Schools.
Schools.
One, two.
You wanna do a one, two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all good everywhere.
There's some things. Yeah.
We've done that before.
Yeah. Insert numbers.
Solid waste.
Solid waste, you were in the front, put those one, two and three. That's a big one that we got.
I think the solid waste, where's composting?
Well, composting's in there. Thing about solid waste is that, um.
I'm not trying to open a can of worms.
I wanna leave this one totally alone until.
Things.
They're working on, so that, they, this comes right out of the old. Ted, what do you think?
What's that?
We're talking solid waste, there'd be a whole bunch of changes that we've got to do there?
Just, just take the parentheses off, that's all.
Well, you got some of the indent, but you've given everything that's going on, should we just leave it to show that it just came right out of the old, regular?
Well, if you notice, well, what you could do is, notice how, how, solid waste has, has a, it's a tree of different, of different subdivisions in it. Like there's the agronomic utilization, the disposal facility, the processing facility, and that's where you are, Marty, that's where you're pressed for about composting, that's what composting is. And notice the last line of that.
Like I said, I'm not trying to open a can of worms up for insult or, no?
No.
I think it would be clearer if there were numbers in front of the different uses, the type of waste facilities, agronomic utilization, disposal facility, processing, transfer and other.
Yeah, it says there's five, so number one, two, three, four, five.
All I have to do with the first three numbers there.
Uh, A, B and C, no, you can't, you've got them above. How about, there's one, we leave one, two, three, and then for the purpose of this ordinance, it's down right above agronomic, number that four. And then agronomic would be.
I don't know, I don't think that, they're not related at all.
Well.
Which not related?
Ag, well, what it's saying here is what a solid wa- you got, you've got a definition of what a solid waste facility is, and that's where one, two, three, four, and then the A's and Bs and so forth. Agronomic utilization is, is a component of, it's a definition of one of those solid waste facilities.
Yeah, great purpose, there are five.
Disposal, processing, transfer and other.
So, so what I would, however we do it.
Bullet.
The bullet, that's fine.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it, when you, when you look at it, when I looked at the top of page twenty nine, I thought that other facility was a, was a standalone definition.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And compared to special event, but just indented funny.
That's what I thought too. So, this is kind of a unique definition, so. Doesn't have to follow exactly what the others work, I don't know if it can.
Well, this is solid waste facility, if we do the one, two, three, A, B, C like we did in the other one.
Yeah.
And then for the purpose of this order, there are five types of solid waste facilities, and then.
Number one, two, three, four.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they ca- I, I.
I like the idea of doing this as four.
Well, but this is, this, this is describing the.
Oh, okay.
See?
Yeah.
So this is separated from there, what I was thinking is, leave this here, for the purpose of this ordinance, there are five types of solid waste facilities. Type one, type one agronomic utilization, two, the two, type two disposal facility, just to show that it's.
So.
Under that and move it over.
Move it all over to the left and.
Because it's part of this.
Would, for the purposes, that line would be over to the left? All the way to left, right here? Yeah.
Okay, here's the only problem, guys, I like that, Bob, only problem is then when you go to the actual section eight, ten, and the types aren't there, what do we do?
What do you mean eight, ten?
We'll go to section eight, ten of the ordinance right now.
Well, could you just do like Roman numerals instead of bullets?
Well.
Do it the same, do it as the same thing what we have right now, fire protection, it ain't there.
Operating permits, application.
Well, remember, we're not gonna try to change this too much because.
No, I'm just saying, you're saying. It ain't there. Same thing as your fire protection, it ain't there.
Well, the only, the only thing is, this is there, there, this is all in eight, ten, and, and, and they repeated it here. It's gonna say, see eight, ten.
Okay, we have, we have it here.
Yeah, you got it?
We have eight, ten, F two is processing facility.
Right.
So maybe, oh no, we can't, we wanna refer this one back to this one. So eight point, ten point F three is disposal.
Yeah, they're all in there, disposers in there, processing, transfer station and other, and also agronomic waste.
Agronomic utilization is before that one, so these, so these are there, so this is. Yeah, so if there's any question about this, this was all transferred to this section. Except this is only under a definition. Yeah, this is the definition of what that is.
Right.
So it should work, Ted, I think.
Well, what should work?
I think if you have the one, two, under solid waste facility.
Right.
Okay, this is what pertains to solid waste facility, then move your paragraph for the purpose of this ordinance, there are five types of solid waste facilities. Indent, not have that four off to the left-hand margin, so it's still under solid waste facilities. Type one agronomic utilization, and then it talks about what it is, one, two, three, applies to that, type two disposal facility. It'll work.
Question.
Well, you know, there's another way to do it, well, another way to do it would be if you, if you read this thing, that one, two, three, that problematic one, two, three thing there is, is. Notice what it says at the top, the following facilities are not included.
Right.
So we should take that all out there and put it at the end.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
And then you take, and then you, then it works because then we have, then we'd say for the purposes of this ordinance, there are five types of solid waste facilities, we put that where following facilities are. And then you do your number one, two, three, four, five, right?
Yeah.
And then at the end you say, not, facilities not included, not regarded as solid waste, and we put this section there. And that way, that'll be much clearer and much cleaner, of course, the caveat's at the end, but, oh well, you know?
But I will, but I think you're defining what it is upfront.
And then you can say what it isn't later.
Yeah, that's a much better way to do it, I like that too, the only question I have there, Ted?
Yes, sir.
In the, in the actual body of solid waste facility, we don't have these five called out, we call out, these include our, but are not limited to, we have the solid waste transfer. But then we have, is landfills under other? Incinerators, processing facility, see, we have one, two, three, four, five, we've got at least six things identified here, and we're saying there's only five.
We should deal with that later.
Yeah, right.
We should.
I think we should deal with that later, and you're, and you're right, Bob, and you're like, it's straight out, this is straight out of chapter, this is straight out of chapter five hundred, the solid waste, uh, legislation.
Yeah, you are right, Bob, we don't want, we don't want to change it.
I have a question, attorney, how you have, for the purpose of the ordinance, there are five solid waste, could you gray area that, like how you have, so it kind of will stand out, there are five different, like, like, John, just use, I just turned a page.
Yeah.
Seventy, seventy one, okay, see, like where it says the zoning standards, see how it's kind of grayed there?
Yeah, I like gray outs.
I mean, uh, just kind of come out and. Stand there, I mean, uh, just, just say, well, there's the five types of solid waste facilities.
What you guys think?
We're just throwing it out.
Well, I think that's the body of, I think the example there is the body of the ordinance, we don't have any gray outs in any other definition.
Yes, but this, this, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm afraid to make this.
I like the idea.
I would, I do too, I'd like to see it.
I like the idea, but I don't know that we wanna.
Do we wanna make, make it look like we changed something here?
No, it's still there, you're just turning on, showing that there is five different types, it's still there.
Well, we're just trying, you know, it's a good idea, why not try?
We're gonna, we're gonna try.
Try it.
It's only a thought, I mean, uh, because you, it's so easy to read that line over.
And then do that at the end, that's a great idea, Ted.
So Ted, you know what to do on that, then?
Yeah.
I think, is there anything else on definitions?
Uh, you know, any of the other definitions?
Yeah, substantial improvement, the numbers should be indented in a little bit.
Spaces, spaces, uh, oh, yes, and the word towers.
The word towers, where, where?
The word in towers.
I'm still numbering this thing.
Okay.
I'm gonna catch up to you.
I'm jumping, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, no, no, when you get an idea, it's always good to remember, it's always clear, right? Six, I'm gonna, on, well, I'll tell you guys later, and I'll figure out a way to do that gray out. Okay, what was the next one?
I just threw out the word towers, yeah?
Is it there?
You got it there, you got it in there.
Okay, it's ninety-eight, yeah, what's, what's wrong with, what's wrong with?
There, there's one thing that's missing.
What's that?
Windmill.
Was it?
Because, because that was not, that was not thought of back in the time of ninety-eight.
Yeah, the only problem that I'm concerned about, Marty, is now I'm starting to add substantive things. I can't do that this round.
Can't do any changes like that.
Okay, I'm just saying it's, it's on a tower.
Yeah, but this
And I would agree with you guys, I mean, we need to put windmills in.
We're gonna deal with that, but we should do that separately.
We're gonna do a windmill and a tower, but I'm not sure it feels good doing, I think this is one area we're crossing along at this point. I think the next, well, we come in June, that's when we need to do that.
It's just a thought.
No, it's a great thought.
It's a great thought.
So, I think that, anything else in definitions, I think that, that does it.
Fire hydrant.
Well, we
No, I'm, I'm serious.
Oh, I, I know, as far as the format goes, we don't wanna
I'm just saying the word fire hydrant.
Yeah, but we're not looking at, we're not even looking at the words.
I'm not in a format, I'm just saying in definition, if it ain't written, it ain't there.
All we're trying to do right now is take what is here, we're not trying to add new stuff, and get it into a new format. We're not adding, see, your idea is to add for the, for the tower piece, the windmill, the hydrant.
We need that.
That is great, that's the next step. Right now, we're trying to format and get the format approved, then we can go in with very specific changes the next time around.
I'm trying to limit, I'm trying to limit any additions or subtractions.
Okay.
You guys did notice that I did subtract in that, um, levels, the level, the business levels?
Yeah.
Because we don't have it anymore. It's nowhere in our ordinance anymore. Since we passed the new business zones, we don't have levels of business, level one, two, and three. And it was an oversight we made, and it shouldn't be in there because it doesn't exist.
You know, on section five, you have some underlying
Section four.
Words is
Section four?
Section four, I'm sorry.
Um, are they additions or?
Yeah. So, what's
So, we're adding something here, then?
We're adding a title, we're adding a heading. Because in the, in, in the ordinance, if you look at section five, this is really five, I've combined, I combined two and three, uh, together. But if you look at section five, it starts off, it says, it says four point one, all buildings whether erected, demolished, and so what, it doesn't say what it is.
Okay, so you're just adding a title?
Adding a heading.
Okay, heading.
So, I understand it. Street access required.
Good.
You know, that's a heading, because before, remember, and Bob, you'll remember this sucker, these are, these are taken from the landmines at the end of section six-three, six-point-three. Remember that whole list of stuff, Bob, that's underneath the table?
Well, we have, we, this is, this four-point-one was five-point-one B.
Right.
Before, for non-conforming, like, or wherever this stuff came from. See, that's gonna be the hard part to remember, to tell people, you better be there.
So, on that page, we have duplexes permitted, that's four-point-three-point-one.
Yeah.
Um, does that need to be its own special number one or?
Duplexes are, they're special by themselves.
Yep. Principal residential buildings.
Okay. But I think what, what Tom's talking about is, in, in previous sections, we would've done that as four-point-three-point-one, maybe duplexes, and then have a paragraph of how, how it pertains. I'm just saying that's how we would've done it in other, other places.
And then it'd be indented automatically.
Yeah, so, and even, even below that, the provisions for reduced lot dimensions, all those one, two, five, whatever, that should be four-point-four-point-one, four-point-four-point-two.
Yeah. When you start looking at it, it starts getting busy.
But that's
I know, and that's, that's one of the things that, you know, you start looking at it, you go, wow, it's getting awfully busy.
I agree.
And then, and then you go
Except I keep going back to, um, to page ninety-five, just, and it has a lot of busyness, I mean, those, but it looks good, it looks readable. Was it ninety-five, I forget what page we were all on. Anyways, um, we, we go with one way or the other, but so far, we've been going with adding them, adding the numbers.
Well, if you look at section eight
That's father and Oh, no, see, twenty-six.
That, that has the extra numbers, yeah.
Yeah.
But then it's just one, two, point, it's the same as E.
Yeah, I mean, I think for, for that, yeah, we're listing it out.
Hey, I got one question, which is totally off the top.
Hold it to Marty, I gotta figure out what you guys wanna do with this one.
Yeah, we don't, we're not sure.
You see the, you see the dilemma?
Yeah, well, we
The formatting dilemma?
Yeah, well, we, here
Yeah.
We've been able to, we've been able to do it, and it works fine with the list. Here, we can do it, and it, I think it works fine.
Okay, I'll go. So, we'll stick, we'll stick to that, if you guys wanna change it, we'll change it back.
We'll, we'll change it back.
I mean, the four-point-four needs to, that, that means, the whole section four-point-four needs to go back further to the left. It's indented for some reason.
Well, the idea, the idea is always, when it's indented, the number is supposed to line up to where its position should be in the top.
Yeah, I think it
Yeah, four-point-four isn't, so when it drops down
Oh, I see, four-point-four, the actual four-point-four is
Four-point-four is indented from four-point-three.
Yes, it isn't, it's just like one space or two spaces.
No, it isn't, but It's, it's all, I'll tell you honestly, it's, it's, it's got the same number on it, maybe there's a space in there inadvertently, but it's got the same indent.
There's space before the four.
It's got the same indent, now, let me just check on that, gentlemen. Maybe it's indent, and then a space before the number.
Just a minor
Yeah, I know, I was just trying
No, you're right, it's, it's hard to catch
No, it's a killer, that's a zero.
That's a zero.
It said zero.
What's a zero?
Four-point-three, and Yeah, you're right, it's a zero.
Hey, I know, I
You're good, you're good, okay.
I had to do this for fifteen years.
Would you like to do it again? Since you're so good at this, could you do it again, Bob, by any chance, please?
I'm tired.
And I think the font is eleven, it's at ten.
Yeah, and we've got all sorts of different
Yeah.
Different kinds.
No, I'm telling you, you're gonna find that most of it's gonna be eleven.
Yeah.
It almost looks
It is eleven.
A little bit of eleven.
I'm telling you, it's all eleven.
The next page has a little bit of both, though.
Yes, this is a mixture of different This is, yeah, seven wasn't the same size.
How are we going?
I just got two questions.
Do we have many?
Question number one.
We have to get out of here to ten.
We need to get to four.
Okay, under definitions, okay, do we have anything, and I didn't see anything? Termitology, grandfather?
No. We don't use that term, actually, that's, that's a term that is a colloquial term, but it's not a real lay-in, it's a term, non-conformist term that's used, is the grandfather.
Well, there's a
So, not, it's legally non-conformist, the same as grandfather, and that's the legal
Yeah, but it's that's spelt out where people get upset up, all right? And the other thing is, you, we were listing something as an estate lot?
Yeah.
Okay? What is it called when every five years that you can give a lot to your kids?
Um, that's, uh, that's basically, that's called a gift, a relative gift. It's a conveyance, that's a relative conveyance.
But it's
It's not an estate lot.
Oh, no, no, but I'm just saying is, we don't have that in there.
We, we We do in a subdivision, we do in a subdivision.
Well, no, we say mercer, don't we, for, for the gifts and the exceptions? We did at one point.
Well, we're getting off track here.
Yeah, we are.
I know, I'm just, I'm trying to think of some other questions that we've had, and I'm looking
I wanna go home and have a beer, though.
I like to eat first.
Me too. Okay, so we got, we got, we, we promised we're gonna bail out of here by ten, so Are we almost done with four?
Four is pretty good, the, the end of four looks really good. Couple of minor little things.
Before you do that, I want, I just wanna point out, remember, this is all this stuff that was underneath that, the big table, remember that, Bob?
Yeah.
That was, it was, it was the wastebasket of all our stuff, and this time, it's, you see how it's all underlined? Basically screaming out at you, yes, there's height exemptions for public utilities, there's setbacks from water bodies, there's mandatory cluster subdivision, and there's provisions for reduced lot dimensions, those are all over the place, we yanked those from all over. And then, uh, street access required, that never had a title on it, so it's all in there on general provisions.
Okay, let me point out on, um, four-point-eight-point-two.
Yeah.
Below that, uh, it's mostly the indenting, like, number one, resumption prohibited, the R is, she needs to be indented in space.
On the C, you got, um, two, A, B, C's gonna be cleaned up.
Yeah, the C is teeny, and the A should be indented.
As part of the paragraph?
Yeah. And, uh, the A, B, C is sticking out to the left two-five, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's interesting, thanks for doing that. And then, paragraph, that's, it's, it's, so you're telling me that two doesn't do it, you want one-nine?
Um, four
Eight? Yeah, I'm looking at the R issue here.
Yeah.
Well, uh, it's particular to that because
It says space before R, just to push it in?
No, 'cause that screws it all up when I do that. No, I just did it, it worked.
Good.
I don't know what's going on there. Change your
You must be peddling it, right?
See, I see that problems, why is that, these all should be all the same, oh, geez, I should Let's take it care of.
All right.
Not confirmed is taken care of, not quite sure why it did that. Sometimes just wants paying attention to the dimensions and the plot box. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, the, the C, A, B, C, the C is, um
Yeah, got it.
Okay.
Got it.
And then, it, it's something, it's, it is text, but at the end, very end of C, it says that you comply with regulation subsection, blah, 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 above, above, um, the space, it's just a space.
Yeah, between two and above, it should be
Two and above, yeah. Just a little
Very?
The word above, the very end of C. You see that? Subsection four-point-eight-point-two-point-two above.
Yeah. About
Should be a space, between two and above.
Oh, I see, I'm going like, is, is there a problem with the word above?
No.
No. Okay. And, covered.
Well, I see a few more things, but I think we need more time to cover what I'm seeing, so we, we got, uh, ten minutes to pack up out of here, so
Landowner's report.
Landowner's report, actually, that's not true. Let's see. What have we done? We've done, um, a couple of things were happening that you need to know about, number one, staff reviews, has approved, uh, expansion of, um, six additional units over at, uh, Arundel Storage, they were converting a, um, the residence into storage units, and it was of the size that came under our per view. So, they changed that residence, the, the caretaker residence into, into small storage units, and I mean, small, they were really small.
And, and were they required to have a
I thought they were having security.
Security, yeah.
Cameras have changed everything. Cameras have changed everything, cameras and automated, automated gates.
But we didn't have our own requirement?
That was the standard we, we, we gave, we don't have a specific, we don't require this, we don't have, we don't have conditionals yet. We had that, we have a subdivision on, on New Road, um, and it's a, it's a division of land, it's not a subdivision, um, but it involved a private way, and what was interesting about it is it is conditional upon, um, the town relining, uh, pulver on the New Road, this last one on New Road that needs to be relined, and they can't do it until, uh, we reline it, and we will be doing that till next year. But that was a pretty interesting one, where they were actually hooking up the town drainage and diverting art, they're gonna put in, an underground system, I think, um, a manhole, and they're going to basically divert the water to another location, take care of the problem, it's been a long, same, so it's, we should work that well. We also have, as you know, don't forget, Monday is the selectmen's meeting, uh, which the selectmen are going to be meeting with, um, the commissioner of DEP about the DuBois odor issue, and Du, and the DuBois livestock has been invited to come. So, uh, that will be a forum that will be held at seven o'clock over at Miller Day School, and folks will probably want to
Monday?
It's Monday, yeah.
Is that a regular selectmen's meeting, or is that a special?
I believe it's a regular, it's a selectmen's meeting, they're gonna defer all of the, uh, the usual business off until after the commissioner leaves, but the commissioner wants to come and talk to us about that issue, so
Does he want to come to the planning board too? He wants
No, he wants to talk to the town through the selectmen, as the, the ticket of officers. But the, obviously, the planning board, since you're in the middle of, the eye of this storm, the planning board obviously has, um, has to be a part of this, or should, should be in attendance. Uh, and then on the eighteenth, of course, we do have our appeal, uh, I think I did notify you all that, um, the appeal has been refiled, DuBois Livestock, they reapplied their, reapplied their appeal, um, from the August thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen decision by the planning board that their application was incomplete.
Question, you were gonna develop a response, aren't you?
I got almost done.
I think, I don't, they, they would be way faster standing.
Well, the, uh, that, that is what the, uh, the findings of fact were by the, by the ZBA, by DuBois's livestock has, the, the appellate has basically said that the, uh, they never received the notice from the planning board because the planner notified them, not the planning board. That's the argument. The planning board, the planner does not speak for the planning board, and cannot notify anybody. We, uh, logically, so, that's, that's our argument, that will be their argument.
We've never done, we've always done that, we've never had the
Well, I think the folks will want me there to explain the
I have, I have to work on Monday night.
It's, uh, it's, no, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, it's a Tuesday, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Selectmen. It is coming Monday, the selectmen's on Monday, but the, uh, the appeal's the following Tuesday.
Question.
We have the planning board meeting on that Thursday.
Turner, as the ZBA stated, when it was at their meeting, okay, that their time, or quote, maybe for appeal, to turn out for their, since they walked out?
Yes.
Did they have to reapply all over again?
Yes.
For our new, this new date?
Yes.
Because the ti, of time sequence was elapsed?
They
No, I mean, the thirty-day quote-unquote or something other?
They applied after the thirty-day limit. Yes. Yes. And they're saying that they can apply because the planning board did not notify them, the town planner did. So the town planner notified them, not the planning board. That's what their argument's gonna be confused. So, get past that one, then the next one is whether or not the town, you know, whether you, you, um. I think I sent you all the appeal, didn't I? If I hadn't sent the appeal, I'll send it out to you. Well, I, I've sat down with Richmond several times, my, um, Richmond, but I think I did send it out to you.
I don't think so.
Not the real appeal? You got the original appeal.
How long ago?
The original appeal is back.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, I sent you, I, I sent you a message.
Yeah, we just, I guess, I guess they got it on October nineteenth, I guess that's what it was.
I sent you a message, I don't have it.
Somewhere else.
I know that, I saw that. See what we can do about it.
The, you, are we done with that subject? Go back to Marty's question. What he's asking, what he was asking about the gifts to kids, exemptions of the butters, those are main state statutes.
Right.
And our regulation says that we're in compliance with the main state statute, three hundred, three hundred and six of the word, something. I think all of those statutes are in there that pertain to that, right?
Actually, it comes under subdivision. It really comes, it doesn't come in the zoning ordinance, it comes in the subdivision.